I'm going to call us to order so we can get going. Good evening, I'd like to call this November 28th meeting of the Northfield Township Board to order. Please stand for the invocation and pledge.
Dear God, you are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together today. We ask for your hand of blessings on this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom, productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work and goals today. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Please call the roll clerk Manley.
Chockley.
Here.
Zelenak.
Present.
Docket.
Here.
Bellinger.
Here.
Manley, here. Chick?
Here.
Otto?
Here.
All here. Okay, we have a quorum and we're all here. Great. Okay, the next item is to adopt the balance of the agenda. And how many of you here are for the medical marijuana discussion? Okay. I would like to propose that we move that up to, as long as the rest of the board is okay with this, move that up to between five and six.
So five A?
So it'd be five A.
Why don't we just move it to the front?
Well, we have our auditors here and our planner here and I'd like to make sure that they are able to efficiently present their materials. So that's my proposal, five A for medical marijuana. So I will make a motion to adopt the balance of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Sorry, support. Okay, that was a motion by Chockley, support by Chick. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Can we have a discussion and roll call vote, please?
Sure, go ahead.
So, you know, as before, I really don't like changing the agendas because I know there are people here that have come, so we need to do better planning, but there might be people here looking at the agenda, saw it was later, might plan on coming later. So I think it's very important that we don't adjust our agendas even though those, the people here to talk about it would have to sit through. I just think we need to do better planning on that regard.
Okay, that's a valid comment.
Aye, everybody.
So I'd like to, again, roll call vote, please.
Ms. Bellinger?
And since, I mean, we have called the public early on, so it does not affect the, if people want to speak on the issue.
That's true. It would just allow them to leave a little earlier because it could go, we could be here awhile. So I don't know what the public thinks about that, but it was just my suggestion. Any comments down here on that?
There's still the opportunity at the end for people to make comment. We're not deciding on anything, it's a discussion item.
It's a discussion item tonight, yes.
We can always continue the discussion if there's people, yes.
Okay.
I didn't hear you, pardon me.
So we can always continue the discussion at the end if, you know, people come up.
Okay, well, we will have a roll call vote on the adopting the balance of the agenda then. Ms. Manley.
Bellinger.
No.
Docket.
No.
Zelenak.
No.
Chockley.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Okay, so the agenda is amended. Okay, we next have the opportunity for call to the public. I don't know if you saw the sign-in sheets out there, and sometimes people come in and they're a little uncomfortable about getting up in front of the microphone, but we really do want to know your position on the items. So if you're here for medical marijuana and you would just prefer to record your thoughts one way or the other on the sign-in sheet, feel welcome to do so. Otherwise, please come on up and tell us what you'd like to talk about tonight. You have three minutes approximately, and state your name, your address, and then share with us whatever you'd like to share. Now's the time. I'll make sure it's turned on and hold it right up to your mouth so that the TV can record this. Our recording secretary is not here tonight, so we want to make sure we get all the comments. Okay.
Mary Devlin, 9211 Brookside Drive. By the way, Marlene, I can't hear you too well on my earphones back there. I don't know if the microphone's on loud enough or not, but anyhow. Okay, what I want to speak on tonight is, once again, Wayne's check issue is on the agenda. He took up 25 minutes at the last meeting over this, and it was voted on over a year ago for employees and officials to get paid by pay card or direct deposit. What he is asking for is special treatment, which is not fair to other employees and officials, and I don't know of any business or company paying prior to the actual date of issuance, check issuance. Also, quite frankly, by his temper tantrums and swearing outbursts, they're disgusting and they take away time that needs to be spent on other issues. The previous board continually gave in to him, and I hope this board will not, but I'm afraid it's going to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Who are you talking about, Mary?
Mr. Docket, it's not a time, right?
Well, I just wondered who she was talking to.
Wouldn't anyone else like to come up to speak?
Hi, my name is Jody Carberry. I live at 9132 Lincoln Drive. I am here to discuss the medical marijuana dispensary issue. I would like you to allow it because I think medical marijuana is a big necessity for a lot of people in our community and surrounding communities that currently don't have anything available for those patients. It helps with a variety of things such as anxiety, cancer, depression, epilepsy, Parkinson's, chronic pain issues. Even the National Institute of Drug Abuse says that pot is the least addictive drug, so if anybody's worried about the addiction, it actually helps with people with addictions. It allows them to not use opiates and other addictive pain drugs that are much worse for you. There's never been any deaths from THC in comparison. Alcohol kills about 100,000 people per year. We have multiple bars in Whitmore Lake. Opiates kill 33,000 people per year. I think we're all very aware of the opiate problem in our area and surrounding areas. If you're worried about teenagers using drugs, the dispensaries only allow people who have a valid medical license to get it, and since Colorado has legalized, teen use has declined slightly by percent. I realize it's not big, but it's something. It's also going to bring jobs to the community, people to the community, and money to the community, and we could use it. Downtown could really use a little uplift. I think we're all very aware that it's not the prettiest downtown in the world. I understand not everybody would use this medicine. We know that the same medicine doesn't work for everyone, but I think those in Whitmore who can benefit from cannabis deserve to have that in their hometown. Thank you.
Could you spell your last name, please? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else like to come forward?
Hi, my name is Mary Beth Sharp. I live at 8578 Naller Road, and I agree with Jody. She had very good comments as far as how marijuana can help patients. There's been many scientific research done on it, although Michigan, when the law was enacted, I believe in 2008, only recognized a limited amount. Since that time, there's been a lot of research done that it helps people with other ailments. I believe that there is a lot of people in our area, in our township, surrounding areas that have medical marijuana cards. Currently, their options are to go to Ann Arbor or to Lansing. I don't know of any in the Novi area or Detroit. I think that this would be a great service to our community, to those folks who do have a medical marijuana card. It gives them easier access. A lot of these folks are suffering with chronic pain, seizures, cancer. They may not be able to get to Ann Arbor, so if we could give them access closer to home, I think would be beneficial as well. I don't have any concerns about increased crime. Excuse me. That they've actually shown that crime has decreased since the law has changed. I think that there's some issues with regards to dispensaries perhaps being a target for crime, for break-ins. That's few and far between from everything that I have seen. I don't think that they're any more of a target than a bank, an ATM machine, even Little Porky's a few years ago was a target here. So I think that's a non-issue. I think also that because teenagers, and I will say this, I'm not proponent for teenage marijuana use because there has been also research done that says that it's not healthy on the brain development. But with medical marijuana dispensaries, you have to be at least 18 years old, and that might change to 21 if legalization comes through next year. So kids are getting it from where they get it now. They will always get it from where they've always gotten it. They're not going to get it from a dispensary. So I would like to ask the board to perhaps, I had offered a resource for this firm that gives free onsite consultations. I would like the board to consider bringing them in. They have, I don't condone them, I don't know them, but...
Fifteen seconds.
They seem to know the rules, and I think that they have a history in creating the rules in 2008 as well as 2016.
Okay, thank you. And how do you spell your last name?
S-H-A-R-P.
Got an email from you, didn't it?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Adam Only, 9315 Lakewood Court. I'm in here in support of voting yes on this. As all of you know, mainly, not the rest of the township knows, a vote yes doesn't mean it's going to open tomorrow, doesn't mean it's ever going to vote, it's just giving that option. So I think taking that action and then obtaining more information as we go down the road would be wise for the board. I don't understand how some of the board members are in fear of a crime uptick, just like any other business that opens. Say Best Buy opens in Brighton, are you going to go out there and say electronics stores shouldn't open because there's theft from electronics stores? Crime happens at every business. Some of you are business owners, you know that, so just, I think that's kind of a ridiculous statement to say we're in fear of uptick in crime. So like some of others said, I think it would actually reduce the crime. People would be able to get the drugs that they need in a legal way, and I think it would improve our township. A lot of the dispensaries that are open are giving back to their communities, doing charitable work, donating to the community, time and money, and we could use a business that upkept their storefront. As many of you drive through town, a lot of our storefronts, even the ones that aren't empty, look pretty bad. So you drive by Little Porky's, I shop there, I buy beer there, it's not the best-looking storefront. A big Budweiser sign, does he really think that that's going to draw someone in to buy beer? You're not going to have that at a dispensary. You're not going to, you guys could allow the sign that you want, you have that ability. You know, if you don't want a big marijuana plant on the front of the building, then don't allow it. If you don't want some big neon signs, don't allow it, but you should allow people the access to the drugs that they need. So I'm in support of it, and I think you, lack of action by the board would be sad. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name's Wayne Davidson. I have a property at 670 Highland Road and a property at 815 Coil Road. I'm here to stress the point that we have 10,000 active in Washtenaw County alone, medical marijuana patients at this time. They do need access closer to home, traffic, everything else goes on with it. Right now, we have to concentrate on opiate addiction problem. Marijuana's not the same thing. I'm here to offer a couple of sample references.
Okay, thank you.
Hold on, let's see. Just got a few...
Okay, thank you.
...about a year ago, and see what we were thinking about it when that...
Okay, I'll have copies made and passed out.
But as far as dispensaries, everything like that, times are changing, and it's time to move on and take care of people in our own township instead of other people having to do that. There's no source of delivery, there's no source of anything for people, and it just needs to happen. It's happening all around, it should happen here too. That's all I got.
Thank you. And how do you spell your last name, sir?
Davidson.
Davidson.
D-A-V-I-D-S-O-N.
D-A-V-I-D. Okay, thank you. Okay.
My name is Stephen Reese, that's R-I-E-S. I currently reside at 9132 Lincoln Drive. I am all for the medical marijuana dispensary in our township. Coming from someone who has had a chronic pain issue since they were 21 years old, I have a degenerate disc disease in between my L2 and my L3, and then lower back arthritis. Basically, my options are to deal with the pain or to have surgery, which will limit my ability to move for the rest of my life. Since then, I have been on many different types of opiates. I have currently dropped opiates and switched to medical marijuana because it seems to be the only thing that helps me day and night. As far as some of the things I've been hearing about, some of the members on the board think that there's going to be a crime increase. Unfortunately, since I've moved here three years ago, I've had my house broken into, and the only thing they did steal was money and my opioid medication. So, I mean, to say that they think that crime is going to increase because it's a different medication, that just seems silly to me. So, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. Anybody else?
I'm looking at the state, we'll have crimes, security, death.
We'll be looking in into all of that. Okay, do we have anybody else who would like to come up?
My name's David Gordon, G-O-R-D-O-N. 5558 Hellner Road. I'd also like to address the item regarding medical marijuana, tongue twister. I noticed in the packet that there's very little information, there's just that one document provided by Mr. Ains, which was nice to see one document, but I'm kind of curious what the board's actually going to discuss since you don't have a bunch of information in front of you to discuss. What I found, what I'd like to have brought up, yes, but that's not available to the rest of us.
It's research I did on my own.
I'm glad that you did research, Jackie, that's great. As a matter of fact, it was one of the things I was going to talk about, there's lots of research out there that you can find. Four companies, according to Mr. Ains, approached the township. I'm curious what they were told, you know, what that was about, what could they possibly be told at this point, whether they encouraged or discouraged. There are legitimate concerns that you may have, I would hope that you can address them and move forward with this quickly. What I find fascinating is that there's a number of young people here speaking in favor of this, but when I've gone to, I went to one dispensary in Ann Arbor, I would say the average age of the people in there were 60, was 60 years old. Most of them had canes or walkers, I mean, they were there for arthritis pain or other sorts of issues. I think this would be a good business for downtown, it would bring foot traffic. You can also consider growing marijuana, we have farmers here and people with small farms, and this would be a cash crop that would certainly generate more money for them than corn or soybeans. The dispensaries in Ann Arbor are pulling in $100,000 a week. That would generate $44,000 a year in taxes for this township with just one dispensary if they had the same sales. I think that might make them the biggest taxpayer downtown. We always seem to have ways to spend money here, so I think that would be welcome. It's legal, it's been legal in this state since 2008. I hope you move forward on this quickly, and that's pretty much all I had. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello, my name's Robert Bono, and I live at 9138 Lincoln Drive.
Speak into the microphone, we can...
Yep. Sorry. My name's Robert Bono, and I live at 9138 Lincoln Drive, and I would like to say yes to this because personally, it would benefit me and a bunch of other medical marijuana card holders for it being closer here, safer, honestly. I guess that's about it, really. I know it brings a lot of good revenue, so it would help.
Okay. Could you spell your last name, sir?
B-U-O-N-O.
B-U-O-N-O. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
Hi.
Good evening.
My name is Lynda Keen, K-E-E-N. I work in your township, I live in Washtenaw County, but not live in your township, I work in your township. I'm an early childhood profession, and I sound like the minority because we have a place in Ann Arbor, my husband and I. We see the dispensaries in Ann Arbor, but what's more personal to me is my sister is in the last stages of cancer, and she went to get her medical marijuana card. She has had no guidance on anything, there's not enough, enough information out there for somebody who needs it for medical reasons. She, she went to, she got her medical card from some doctor who was just in a room that she had to go meet, and got her card, just gave, I don't, he didn't consult with her, he didn't tell her how to use it or anything. She went to...
Sir, okay, could you...
I can do that, I heard you, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
When she went to the Ann Arbor dispensaries, she didn't get any information on how to use it, how much to use it, what type to use. Now, she's not using it for recreational reasons. I, myself, do essential oils, and I do herbs, and I do a lot of natural remedies, and I believe plants heal, but in America, we're not far enough along to know exactly how to use it in that type of manner. She's, the one experience that I'm going to share is she went to one of the Ann Arbor dispens, she's been to a couple. The person that she was consulting with told her that when he falls off his skateboard, he takes this one, and this is how much he takes, and that's as much information as she got. She and I just kind of had to look at each other afterwards and said, maybe if he wasn't high, he wouldn't fall off of his skateboard and need medical marijuana. I just don't think there's enough professional information out there yet. I would not, since I work in your community, I, and I'm in early childhood, I think children being exposed and even seeing it around, it might be asking for trouble, might be opening up a can of worms. Ann Arbor's only 15 minutes away, I have a house in Ann Arbor, I drive 15 minutes up here. I don't think there's public transportation yet, but I guess I'm, so far, I'm the only, I walked in a little late, sorry, I work till seven. But anyway, that's my, that's my experience, and my experience too, living in Ann Arbor with people who have the card, there's not, I don't, you can get a medical marijuana card, and there's not a whole lot to, to, to be able to get one, except money, 75 bucks or something is what my sister paid. So my main concern...
Fifteen seconds, ma'am.
There's not, it's not been researched enough, and people are not given good information for using it in, in medical ways, especially really serious conditions. And they're not told, don't, you know, and there's not enough naturopaths or anybody. I go to naturopaths, and they're not informed yet either. So it's kind of early in the phase of really looking at it for that purpose.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else at this time? Okay, seeing no one else, we can move on, we will move on to board member comments, and if, if anyone has any comments at this time, if it's associated with medical marijuana, we will have a little discussion later, so I'd ask the board to refrain at this point, but if there's anything else that you'd like to bring up, feel free. And looking down there, Ms. Chick?
Because we're going to discuss it later, I just want to thank everybody that came to speak to it, for it or against it, very thoughtful comments, and took them all to heart. Thank you. Appreciate your coming out tonight, too.
Thank you. Mr. Docket?
I'm, oh, I'm sorry, I thought, I thought I turned it on. I'm one board member that's kind of on the fence here. I don't do medical marijuana, I never have, I don't intend to, but it's legal, it's aspirin. So, I mean, it's like saying, well, I don't like the pig farm because when I go by, I got to hold my nose, or I don't like the junkyard, they're legal businesses. So, there's where I am at, but I will say, I don't know enough about it to really make a good decision probably, because I don't know anything about it, but that's my feeling. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on, correspondence and announcements. I do want to mention, oh, do you have to comment, too?
Yeah, just have a comment. Like I said, we're going to talk about this probably later on, but just board member comments. We'll be asking the board, looking to, see if I can get the board to agree to return the refund from the Prop 1, refund from the Prop 1 millage to the taxpayers in Northfield Township, so I'm looking forward to talking about that yet tonight.
Okay.
Thank you, and thank you for coming out.
Thank you. And we do have a whole packet of letters that's been compiled from Facebook and emails to us that are sitting at our desks, so we have quite a bit of information from the public already on medical marijuana, and so that's the correspondence I just wanted to draw attention to. It's always good to get it in writing, so if any of you wanted to send email to us, that'd be great. Anything else?
Are we on correspondence now?
Yes, we are.
Okay, because I do have a correspondence...
Go ahead.
On the medical marijuana issue, just before I was leaving the house today.
Well, it, we're not reading everybody's, so...
Okay, all right. He was asking, did it be heard, but I guess just put it in for the next packet or what? This came about 6 o'clock today.
Unfortunately, if you do one, you have to do them all.
And we could be here...
And there's hundreds.
Right, okay, thanks.
Okay. Okay, thank you. The only announcement I want to make is that we are still recruiting Planning Commission, ZBA, and Board of Review, so if anybody wanted to apply for one of those committees, the application time is still open. Please get in touch with me or Jennifer or Mr. Ains for an application. That'd be great. Okay, the next item is our present... Pardon?
I wanted to say something real quick.
Okay, go ahead.
Our successor just sent out a notice, I think it would be a good idea to send out a notice to us, and I just thought I'd reiterate it. This was a notice from the Treasury Department warning taxpayers of fraudulent phone calls. They did say that Treasury will never initiate a call to ask for personal information, call to demand immediate payment, threaten to immediately bring a local police or other law enforcement groups to have the taxpayer arrested for not paying, demand that taxes be paid without giving the taxpayer the opportunity to question or appeal, or ask for a PIN, password, or other codes. So if, if you do get any phone calls from someone saying that they're a tax, they're a tax official, it is a fraudulent call.
Okay, thank you. Okay, uh, moving on, now we have opportunity for our presentation from our auditor. Welcome, this is Mr. John Pfeffer, correct?
Yes.
Did I pronounce it right?
Yeah, uh, I would like to start off by saying thank you, uh, for having us as your independent auditors. Okay, alright, great.
You might wanna take it out, just hold it out to you.
Okay. Hang on one second. Is that good? Okay, good, thanks, Wayne. So, uh, the audit period that I'm here to discuss tonight is for the fiscal year ended, uh, June 30th of 2017, it's the fiscal year ended, and, um, you'll see that the report is rather lengthy, it's about, you know, it's 115 pages, so I'm just here to discuss a few of the highlights in that report. I would also like to say a special thanks to the staff of the township, uh, Treasurer's Office, Clerk's Office, uh, assistants from Steve, and, um, all, all the staff has been very helpful, the importance is, they allow us to get the audit done timely and within budget. And the township, um, went through, uh, as far as auditors go, a significant change this year, too, is with the accountant. And Rick had done a great job in the past, he'd been doing it for many years, and the board, uh, went out and, uh, found a new accountant, and Yvette, Yvette, and she just, I just wanna let the board know she does, she's doing a great job.
Can you introduce Yvette? Yvette's here tonight.
Yeah. Yvette's back in the back.
Yeah, Yvette Patrick.
Thank you.
She's our controller.
And again, Yvette didn't have a lot of experience, or I think almost zero experience in governmental, and there's a big difference between governmental and business accounting, and she stepped in, um, got, you know, dug right in, and the, the thing that's so important from our perspective is this, when the board's looking at your financial information, it has to be accurate for you, to, to make proper decisions. And from our standpoint, when we come in, there might be some things that we think that maybe, uh, you should, you know, we propose an adjustment, you know, you still make the adjustment, uh, on the township level, but we had very few of those adjustments. And the importance of that is that when you're looking, again, at budget to actual reports, that it's accurate. So, again, I can't say enough, you know, we kind of, uh, from our standpoint, it's very important, the, the work that's done in that area, and, and again, um, we can't say enough about Yvette in a short period of time. There's already a comment in our report about the chart of accounts, uh, getting them, you know, more updated, she was already ahead of the curve about talking about changing some of them and getting them, uh, more uniform, so, you know, that's all good stuff. So I just wanted to let you know that, it's very important. With that, um, I'd like to, to report also to the board, that it's very important that you have an unqualified opinion, and, and that's the auditor's opinion that we're issuing tonight, it's the highest level that the independent auditor can, can issue, and the importance of this opinion is twofold, one is with, uh, the state shared revenues. So the state shared revenues are really, you know, people, the public doesn't really understand, it's about 50% of your total revenues for your general fund. And then, uh, also, it's important that if the township have to go for any bonding, so if you had a new project that you're gonna take on with the sewer, or, or some other area, it would help you with that bonding, get a good bonding rating, and then, the state of Michigan, it's very important to them. So I, I wanted to mention that, that from our perspective, you got this 115-page report, but right in the first few pages is the auditor's opinion, and that's, uh, the, the, what the state of Michigan's gonna look, look at, which is very important. I also wanted to mention the financial condition of the township. So, the financial condition of the township is still very strong, but as you, as you know, last year, there were some large expenditures that went out. Uh, there was expenditures that went out for some roads, uh, you also purchased some land, and then, um, we also purchased some equipment for public safety. So, the reason I'm mentioning this is, the board, uh, the previous board, had passed a resolution to try to maintain a fund balance in the general fund of 85% of expenditures. And, so, in terms of what this means would, would be, if next year's general fund expenditures were gonna be 1 million, you wanted to start the year with 850,000 in your fund balance. Well, what happened last year is you did eat into your fund balance by 50%. And, so, uh, we spent a lot of time looking at that, and also with your current, your budget that you're in right now, um, you would probably be able to get up to about 70% of where you need to be, you're not gonna hit the 85. It could be a little bit better than that if, you know, the budget is, you know, comes in a little bit better than, you know, we hope it would, and a lot of times, that is what happens. So, there's really no reason to be, to have any concern with that, because you're on the uptick with, with, with the fund balance. I would just have to throw in one comment, though, going forward, as an independent auditor, your fund balance policy was established at 85% of expenditures. I kinda lean to the more conservative approach of 100%. And the, the main reason why I do that, is again, I'm an accountant, um, also, we've seen the ups and downs of this economy, and the most important part is, 50% of your general fund revenues come from state shared revenues, and if that, if that spigot gets turned off or changed in any fashion, then we need, you need time to react. So I would continually work to get that fund balance up a little bit, so that going forward, you could react to if something changed on the state shared area. What, what's been discussed at times is that certain units, uh, certain type of government units, they were gonna not allocate as many funds, or, or cut that in certain areas, and if that should happen, um, you want more time to react, so, I, all's I'm saying is, going forward, as you look at that fund balance policy, and you're gonna probably hit the, get it back up to the 85% within a year or so, I would then also look at, may, the goal of about 100% is my feeling, just on a more conservative approach. So, I just wanted to mention that, but that was probably, um, in a, it was in the management letter, I wanted to explain that a little bit better. The good news is, you're already on the uptick in the current budget, to get it back up to hopefully around 70% or more, so you're getting it back up there. Last year, there was just some things that came up, one was, you know, the purchase of equipment for public safety, which obviously is very important, and, uh, there was, you know, some road work that was done, which is very good for the community, you know, it's good for the residents, which is always good, 'cause you're spending the money back in the community, which is a good thing, so, nothing wrong with any of those items, it's just, going forward, the mindset that, you know, I just think would possibly be a good idea. Let's see, with that, I would just open it up for any questions that, that anyone would have, and, um, at some point tonight, if you could approve the auto report, so it gets sent to the state of Michigan. Go ahead, Wayne.
I would imagine the reason you mention it is because there are some people on this board who's mentioned the fund balance, so I, I'm sure that some people on this board said, "Well, let's get this right now," 'cause you know what Dockett's gonna say, "Well, uh, you know, 85%?" Well, I remember when we did, when we voted on it for 85%, you wanted more at that time, and, that we went to 85. This board has paid no attention to that. I don't care what you say, they, they, they spent down to like 41%. Hey, we voted on it, not this board, but there's three people on this board that did it, and they disregarded it, so, uh, I, I believe we need to get back to that. Another thing in your report here, you'll usually, you've been, I've been on here for, this is my 10th year, you've been here every year since then, as far as I know, and you always pat us on the back. Now, I don't see much in here this year about how great we're doing, usually in your letter you have how, how you feel about us, it's not in there this year. It's different than it's been the last nine years, that I can see, so...
I'm not sure I totally understand, there's, the comments in the, uh, letter, I think there was maybe even a few more this year than had been in the past, but, you know, the, the big thing from our standpoint, from the auditor's standpoint, is, number one, which Lenore's done a great job with, is that to make the fund safe, uh, as if it was grandma's money, which is important. The other one is, you're getting an unqualified opinion, and the last part, Wayne, is that you did, you're right, you, there were some expenditures you had last year, but I'm already seeing in the current budget, that you're getting back in line now, you know...
I have said nothing about Lenore, I'm talking about you. I, I, it just didn't seem to me like you were writing a report, that's all I'm saying.
Okay.
And, and I do believe that, that we disregard the fund balances, dangerous, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions from...
I don't know if it's a question, I do have, well, I guess it is a question, at 100% fund balance, the reason we chose 85% was so that we could take that 50% and give it back to the community. At 100% fund balance, what does the community get?
Well, all's I'm saying, Janet, is that, um, once you hit the 100%, you could, when you have the excess, you, you could keep doing it. So I'm not saying that, you know, the foolproof number is 100%, I'm just saying that, it, you know, and again, Wayne pointed it out here, too, is that last year, instead of being 85%, we ended up at around 40. And so, what's happening is, is that if we have those unforeseen costs during the year, then if you're at 100, you could cut, you know, you have a little bit more to fall back on. And I, I'm not saying that you shouldn't put money back into the roads and do all that, I think it's, it's a good thing, and yet, it's what you guys did. It's just, um, so what will hap, what I'm hoping happens, so Jan, is that you're gonna get the fund balance on it, up, and maybe you stop at 85%, and then, the excess you keep putting back in, which is what, you know, the township has been doing.
Right, yeah, the, the last, the, the reason it's at 43, well, you know, because of the expenditure, that doesn't happen every year.
No.
That was, that was really unusual, and we hope not to do that again, so...
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And the best thing, too, on that, Jan, is, and, and you, we're gonna, if we haven't gotten it yet, the RFP that, that you can put on the website, is the fund balance, uh, this is a fund balance graph, and, you know, you have, you know, the fund balance has been built up, higher than, you know, maybe it should be, so, it was spent down for things that, you know, for the community. You know, obviously, public safety, and the roads, and those things, and, uh, but, you know, again, just 85% would be acceptable, too, you know?
Ms. Otter?
So I had two things, you have in here the existence of significant deficiencies or material weaknesses that may be known to management, did you have some examples in here, as to, you know, our establish of controls over financial reporting? Is it just that you, that you guys...
Just the internal controls.
Just that you guys are doing our financial statements, or...
That, that's it right there. So in other words, and Jackie's question is really good, i- is that Yvette's come on, and she's doing a really good job, if she, if she had the ability to actually write your financial, that section comes out. It, to us, it really doesn't make sense even, that what that section says, it sounds pretty harsh, okay?
That's what I thought it was, 'cause I thought, "Oh, you're telling us we don't have controls?"
No, but, but that's exactly it, it's about ability to write the financial.
Okay. All right, the next one is, and this goes back to the fund balance, and I'm not gonna say this correctly, but, is there a way that we could establish, um, capital improvement expenditures for future use, so they wouldn't affect our fund balance?
Yes, and, and one, one way, which is a really good question, and it goes back to, again, what Jan's bringing up, too, is, within the fund balance, you can commit for, you know, roads, or commit for these projects, whoops, excuse, and it will be still in the fund balance, but it'll just say committed, and it's a really good way to do it.
Okay.
So, you know, basically, um, and then you can uncommit in the future, if you decide to change it, it doesn't have to be locked in. So what you can do as a board, and I mentioned to Steve, uh, going forward, uh, as you guys work on your new budget, or you have amendments to the budget, if I could, you know, I could assist him with that, we, you know, if you had things that you wanted to commit, y- you know, I could help, uh, you establish that.
I have one more question.
Oh, go ahead.
Another question on segregation of accounting duties. I do know that we take in checks into, do we get, do we have a lockbox?
We have a lockbox in the best bill.
No, I meant, at the bank, where they submit checks to the lo, to the bank, and the bank just gives us a reading.
Uh, we can, I mean, at nightly, we can do deposits at the bank, into the lockbox, I'm not sure of the question.
Okay. So, um, because of where I work at, we do funds for the state of Michigan, and the bank that we use has a lockbox, which means the money goes directly to the bank, into the account, all we get is a listing of the dispersment, of the dispersment funds that went into it, and what it belongs to, and we do the accounting from the back end. Is there any other townships that do anything like that?
They really don't, they don't use the lockbox, no.
'Cause I was thinking, because we do have issues, because we're so small of an office, we've gotten hit with this all the time, the segregation of duties. Get it, understand it, and it's probably never gonna go away.
Exactly.
Unless we get bigger. But, um, I was thinking that that was probably one area that we could do, is get rid of accounts receivable, that it goes directly to the bank.
Yeah, our main, our main item...
There is fees for that, though.
Yeah. The main item that we're dealing with is the tax collection. A lot of the other funds from the state of Michigan are direct deposited, so, state shared revenues, things like that, in some cases, or other, uh, grant monies, but it's the tax collection which is, you know, you, you really have to have that come in, so you can do the accounting and really tie it out in different ways. We, we have talked to the senior center, and we're getting, we got them to agree to bring the funds down, uh, more often, to deposit. So, sometimes they don't, you know, they have a, a yoga class or some stuff, and they don't really collect too much in a week, could be $5, but we're still asking them to bring that down every week, rather than once a month.
So, I know we had transferred the funds for the fire truck.
Yeah.
So that was 250,000, now, if we had kept that in our general fund until it was actually needed, we would've looked a lot better. So a lot of this is on paper, right?
Correct.
And it, and it kinda fluctuates a little bit from year to year, um, and, and I guess, if we were to kept, have kept it in our general fund and just restricted it, then, um, then the numbers would've looked a lot different.
Exactly, your fund balance in your general fund would've been 250,000 more, it would've just been committed, or restricted, and your, your current, it's true, your fund balance would've been higher.
Right, and, and I know Munetrix recommended a, a minute, that you don't go below 40% on your, uh, for your fund balance, which seems pretty tiny...
Yeah.
To us, and that, um, and I agree with your concern that there could be some extraordinary expenses that could come up, and we should be wise to be conservative about what we do with our funds, and I, I do agree that we need to build up our fund balance again. But again, I wanna reiterate that we had some opportunities last year that were, um, it's kinda hard to pass up when you, uh, consider the, the benefit to the community and the potential, um, investment in the community, especially with our North Village site, so...
Yeah.
Anyway, those are my two cents. Mr., no, we'll go with Ms. Bellager.
So I, I, I just have a question about, like you mentioned, that we'll just use the 250,000 for the police, for the equipment. So you're saying that if we would've kept it in our fund balance, but yet, can call it committed, then it would make the numbers look better? But if it's committed money, in a sense, it's already spent, so I am not understanding this, it seems like it would be, uh, not real, not true, 'cause when you have a fund balance of a, like 100%, which is conservative and ideal, just like you said, in case we don't get funding as we expect from state revenue and so forth, um, then, it just doesn't seem right, if you have money, uh, makes the numbers look good, but it's really already spent, or going to be spent. It's going to be.
Well, that's true, except that, when the money is spent, is when you normally would book the liability, it's actually spent. Now, the money was gonna be spent, or, I'm not, I can't remember exactly when it got spent. So it hasn't. So what would happen in time, is that if you flip over...
Mr. Dockett, wait a minute.
Wait a minute. I, I wanna, I wanna know what he said. I wanna know what the chief said.
Oh, he couldn't hear him, okay, go ahead and repeat that.
He, he asked me if the money had been spent, the money has not been spent yet, and won't be spent until the next budget year.
Well, we spent the money... Well, we spent the money in order to order, that we had to pay for it when we ordered it, that money.
We have not paid for it.
We, we appropriated the money to pay it.
We have appropriated it, but we haven't spent it. We haven't spent any money on it. Lenore actually put the money in a CD to earn some interest.
So as to your question Tom, what happened was, is if you, on the fire fund, if you have the, take the big report, the real big, heavy duty one, and go to page 56.
The fire fund fund balance looks really good right now.
Third, thirty-six, did you say?
Page fifty-six.
Oh, fifty-six.
Fifty-six. Got that? Okay, about pointing out to you guys. So you see what happened here is this fund balance, uh, the, these are the revenues for the fire. These were expenditures. It was about a break even. 275K came in. The fund balance started at 535 and went to 832. So it's sitting in here. If it hadn't been transferred, it'd have been sitting in the general. This would've been what it's been. It wouldn't have changed much. It would've gone up by 22. So it, it is still sitting there.
But it's committed.
Exactly, so-
But he said, but what he's saying is it could be committed in the general fund.
Yeah.
But it's not.
Right.
Not now it isn't, 'cause it got moved.
Right.
But no, that's a, that's a real good question.
And I was wondering if we should have a policy that we do that now from going forward.
There has been some discussion about, like the Barker Road rent and the cell tower, to restrict those, uh, for those uses, but keep them in the general fund. 'Cause we don't want to take them out and put them in something special.
We haven't got anything from the cell tower that I know of.
So you're saying if we-
We are getting money.
I, I've not seen anything on the cell tower. Is it old? I mean, is it, is it in the paperwork somewhere?
Yes. It, it, your next budget, you'll be able to see some of it.
Well, maybe the next budget, but I don't see it in here.
It's in the last budget too, so, okay. All right. Any other questions for, I do, Ms. Zelnak.
So, um, basically in the preparation of the financial statements, has the township ever prepared them?
No.
I, I mean, I didn't think so.
No.
And is this audit report similar to other audit reports that the township's received?
Exactly.
Yeah, so-
Actually, this is, this is one of the better ones.
And so, I mean, what you've called out is some of the areas we need to work on.
Yeah.
And some of them were similar to last year as well.
Yeah.
And there are some new ones based on what I was reading. And so, and I just like, I make a comment on the, like the delinquent. We'd indicated that we should deem them collectible and write them off. So I'm, I'm working with the county treasurer because we can't expunge them unless she agrees to it. And-
Excuse me, you can't expunge it what?
We can't expun delinquent pro- personal property taxes unless the county treasurer agrees to that.
Well, we have to wait five years, don't we?
And she still has to agree to it. And so we're-
Have we got a lot for, for five years?
Right. So, but we have to work with her because there was some case that came to the office and there was a court case and we tried to expunge it and she said, "You didn't come see me." So we need to make sure we're, and so we're building that relationship with-
Are we trying to collect it before the five years?
We certainly are.
Is somebody actively trying to collect it?
We certainly are. Yes, we are. So it's, um, you know, it's our statutory duty. So, um, been working with Mr. Byrne's office and we have a procedure and we're looking at it. Actually, the majority of our delinquencies are in the manufacturing housing community. We do have some other ones and a couple of big ones that are, um, but, so that, I think part of it is I didn't feel comfortable writing it off without working with the county treasurer on that. So might be why we got that one in there.
Thank you. Ms. Manley has a question.
Yeah, just a quick question, more for Lenore probably. Like the other matters, the, like you just said about the personal property and the outstanding checks. That's something that you'll be working on with Steve or whoever I'm assuming.
Yes, delinquent property, personal property taxes is a statutory duty of the treasurer. This, I think the checks might be, I think Yvette's, Patrick is working on some of that.
But the smaller items will figure it out.
Right. So it's a small amount, but a lot of them. And I think that, and that was a comment that was there last year's as well. So we do have a plan to try to address both of them.
Ms. Bellager.
So if I was to get just a quick review, would it be fair to say that this is a favorable financial audit review?
No question, very favorable.
Very favorable. Okay. All right. Cool. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jan.
Make a motion to accept the audit report. I'll still move that, or make a motion that we accept the audit report as presented.
Support.
Okay, a motion by Zelnak and support by Bellager. And let's have a roll call vote since this is money.
Chalkley.
Yes.
Zelnak.
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto.
Yes.
Check.
Yes.
Duckett.
Yes.
Bellager.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Jan.
And thank you, Yvette. All right.
Good job, Yvette.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is to consider the release of the RFP for the North Village. So we have, Mr. Lippens here tonight, in case there are any questions.
What's on number three?
Yes, we are on number three.
All right. Good evening trustees. It's my pleasure to be here this evening to discuss the release of the North Village RFP. As you know, we had a joint meeting, um, to discuss this and, um, at that time, we referred the RFP to the attorney for review. And you have in your packet this evening, an, an RFP that has been reviewed by the attorney. Comments were made, were mostly technical in nature to make sure that, uh, the language in the RFP was, um, representative of the intentions of the township and that was not making any commitments, um, that we were not willing to make with, in regard to the release of the document. I think it's a, certainly a good evening to be presenting this. Uh, one of the good reasons for releasing the RFP is to provide for some fiscally responsible improvements to the, uh, North Village site and to look at, uh, potential ways to subsidize, um, some public amenities there through some private development of the holdings of the, of the township. This process really is designed to get some feedback from the market, uh, from private development, uh, developers as to, uh, the value of the site and, um, the ways that it could be developed for some, some private uses to help support some of the amenities that residents have expressed the desire to have included at, at the site. Of course, this time we've had many discussions about it. I'm sure, uh, everyone on the board has had ample time to review the document. I'm mostly here this evening for questions. It is our hope that, um, the board this evening will authorize, um, staff and the township manager to distribute this RFP. And can, uh, discuss the schedule. Um, it, uh, would certainly be appropriate if, uh, there are any modifications to the schedule that the board would request. Now would be the time to, to talk about it. Certainly you could also defer, uh, make some comments on that manage and then defer, uh, to the township manager, the ability to, um, create a timeline that, that, that fits the schedule as well. So I wanted to keep my comments brief and mostly be here for questions and, and discussion.
Ms. Chick.
There's several strike throughs in the entire document and I'm wondering, are some of them struck and stricken because they're redundant? Like there's on page, oh, there's no page. Oh yeah, page three, um, almost the last paragraph. One of the, um, so, the selected respondents may be identified in the sole discretion of the township at the culmination of a selection process that, and then all of the qualifications or all of the criteria was struck out. So we're not asking for conceptual proposals for development of the site. Isn't that what we want?
If I may.
Okay.
There were two different sets of criteria in the report. There was a limited set of criteria in the introduction, then a longer set of criteria at the end. Our goal in eliminating the criteria at the beginning was to make sure that there was no question as to the breadth of the criteria that were being evaluated by the township. We felt that it was ambiguous to have a set of four criteria at the beginning that were somewhat limited and then a much more in-depth section of criteria towards the end. And so we eliminated the criteria at the beginning as essentially duplicative, but more restricted.
Thank you.
Ms. Otto.
Okay, I do understand the crossing out of Whitmore Lake and Northville Township. But on page seven, it is the third paragraph down where it says, "The zoning of the North Village Site, Whitmore Lake, North Village Sub-District, supports a unified vision for transforming the historical communit- commercial core of the, and Northville Township and, well, Whitmore Lake Second was crossed off and it said Whitmore Lake Community. Shouldn't it just be Northville Township Community? Because it's really the community."
Our office was the one that made all the revisions to Northville Township, which were then struck out later.
Okay. The rest of them, I understand how you went back and forth with it. Because if it's downtown, you stuck with Whitmore Lake. But I think when you think about the community, you should think about it in its totality of Northville Township. And if it's a historic district-
Historic commercial core is in Whitmore Lake, right?
There's a lot of historic commercial buildings in Northville Township.
Outside of Whitmore Lake?
I would say so.
Okay. I think it's a semantic thing. We, it, it can be Northville Township if, if that's the pleasure. Anybody in three weeks after reading this is-
I mean, we don't have that as a commercial district, the downtown area. So I think that's why you just need to be careful that you, if you're focusing that at Whitmore Lake, but the rest of the township, the rest of the area as the community should be Northville Township.
I don't care.
I know.
It can be either one as far as I-
To me, we've separated the two way too long and we need to bring it in together as one.
But, you know, when, when you talk about us, you know, there's Whitmore Lake out on the expressway, you know, and you, you tell people where you live and you, nobody knows where Northville Township is. But when you mention Whitmore Lake, they know Whitmore Lake. So then we, we should combine them somehow so that we can start to bring up the-
It's a marketing, it's a marketing promotional brand issue.
Well, so-
Well, so is Green Hill involved with, with the downtown zone?
So anyway, I-
Another county. When you talk about Whitmore Lake, in two counties.
True. So we could, can we do Whitmore Lake comma, Northville Township?
On that particular one, um, I, of course, will defer, but I think Northville Township Community would be just as appropriate there. I will remark that, um, I think that the revisions point out Northville Township is the legal governing entity. So we put that in places. We've added that, you know, Whitmore Lake is a historic place, um, but it's more, it's a hamlet within a legal government entity. So this document, I think, clearly expresses that, um, and tries to dispel some of that confusion.
Okay.
Well, can I just speak to the confusion? So I actually asked Marlene this question. It, Whitmore Lake is a post office and Whitmore Lake is a lake. But Whitmore Lake itself isn't either legally a hamlet, a village or a city or a township or whatever. So can't you, can't we do something formally to make it a place or, no?
Well, you're the planner. You would-
Yeah, well, I mean, a hamlet isn't really a legal description. It's, 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 um, it's a place, you know, within, you know, most of them are within townships. But I, at planning commission meeting, I gave the example of, uh, Oakhamis and Haslett, which are both in Meridian Township. Holt, which is in Delhi Township, um, which is, you know, I'm working there now and they're branding their downtown as, you know, Downtown Holt. And kind of, um, you know, embracing that kind of dichotomy between having a historic place that people identify, regularly identify with, not just here, but in the entire region. But, um, you know, that place is, is within the legal entity and, and community of, of Northville Township, which is also a community.
Whitmore Lake goes all the way out into Hamburg, so it's, yeah.
Kind of seems like we're stuck with Whitmore Lake for this area.
It's what everybody recognizes, you know, in, in a way. We need to, we need to, we need to start bringing them both up and, together. So I think it's fine to keep them together where it's appropriate. Ms., um, well, Ms. Zelnak.
So, I mean, what was the reason to change it to Whitmore Lake over Northville Township? Just 'cause that's how it's referred to? I mean, throughout the document.
We, we referred to it as Northville Township throughout the document.
I would prefer it all be-
Because that's our, that's our-
Yeah, so I thought you made the changes and then we go through it and we say-
It's back and forth, yeah.
Yeah, it's been back and forth and-
So it says the character downtown, it was Northville Township, now it's Whitmore Lake, pretty much throughout the document. So who made that change?
I made, I made some edits and I don't know if this is mine.
Okay, so I, I was just curious why it isn't just called Northville Township throughout the document. It starts out Whitmore Lake, Northville Township, and then it was the post office in Northville Township and then the boundaries of the township. And then it goes downtown and then it starts to change to Whitmore Lake. So I, I was just wondering. And, and with that document, we've been talking about it. We had some suggestions, you know, Northville Township, the home of Whitmore Lake. As a thought to try to bring us together somehow. But, so I, I'm just curious how it was Northville Township and then has now been changed to Whitmore Lake in the document.
Many of the references were Whitmore Lake because that's the way it's referred to in the North Village Plan and in the Downtown Plan for Whitmore Lake. But that's because there was discussion with the Downtown Planning Group and the, the DDA during, during the creation of the Downtown Plan that embracing that as the, you know, historic name for the downtown area was the way it was recommended to proceed. And we did get some feedback from the public that supported that idea too.
And the DDA feels very strongly that Whitmore Lake shouldn't be kind of dismissed. We have the Whitmore Lake Public Schools, we have Whitmore Lake, we have Whitmore Lake Hamlet. There's a lot of Whitmore Lake out there. So, and that's what's recognized by a lot of the, the population. And is there a downtown Northville Township? There really is a downtown Whitmore Lake. So, um, I, I think we need to find some way to bring them both together and although, you know, Brad had gone, must've crossed out all of this. When I saw it, I thought, well, it's really both. So then-
Why don't we do Whitmore Lake comma, Northville Township? Whitmore Lake comma, Northville Township?
Which is the way it is in here, almost in every case.
No, it's actually been crossed out. Northville Township's been crossed out. For the most part, I can tell.
Well, which version do you have? Right, look, you've all gotta have the same version.
Page seven.
It just says that it was the character of downtown, it has Northville Township crossed out, Whitmore Lake is now there. So the character of downtown Northville Township's, you know, slash, comma, just like it is at the top. It says, "In downtown Whitmore Lake, Northville Township." In the, I think throughout the document, that's what it should say.
Okay.
Whitmore Lake comma, Northville Township, as opposed to picking one or the other.
I, I believe that's what it says. I have a version that doesn't have the track changes and it could be that what you're looking at is two different track changes. You're looking at the track changes from, from Brad and then some additional comments from, uh, the supervisor who made the attempt to merge these comments. Um, so I believe that this issue has actually been resolved in the current, um, document with the exception of trustee Otto's comment, uh, which I think saying the Northville Township Community is an easy revision.
So what we would see in the document then is just as we do in the title, anytime Whitmore Lake, Whitmore Lake is there, it'll be Whitmore Lake comma, Northville Township.
Can we do that? Is everybody okay with that?
I think that would be good.
I would prefer that.
I think we're gonna have to get to a point because this was, this goes back to the Blue Skies Committee when we did the marketing analysis where people got confused.
They didn't know, what are we, Whitmore Lake, North Township? We don't know what we are. And when you start, and it's because the township and/or Whitmore Lake have never branded themselves. They have always been dysfunctioned as part of, this area is called Whitmore Lake, everything else is called Northville Township. And when you start doing that, that's why we've had so much separation in everything. We need to just bring it all together and say, we're one community.
Okay. Ms. Chick?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the RFP for North Village as amended with the change to Whitmore Lake, common Northville Township, and to proceed with release.
I support.
Motion by Chick and support by Bellinger. Okay, I have a little more discussion here. And it's about the timeline at the back. I know the DDA discussed this also, thinking that the timeline was too short. And if that motion could be that the timeline could be adjusted so that we're maybe- Look at page sixteen.
Sixteen?
Yep, second to the last. It's got the, so if, could you tell us a little about the release, then? Because the pre-proposal meeting in here is scheduled for January 17th. And is the intention that if we approve it tonight, it would be released like next week?
Yes. I think the intention would be to post it initially on the township website, which is maybe a soft release, but that it would be available. But then to use our Planning Commission meetings and our resources to also spread it around, post it on a few professional websites, which is why we've, we've set the pre-proposal meeting for January 17th to give us, you know, a full six weeks to make sure that people have time to get it in their hands. It's certainly not uncommon in the RFP process to, you know, find out about an RFP a week, even a few days before that January 17th deadline. But that's when people, you really want people to be there. So we want people to be at that, that meeting.
Plus, you also have some holidays and all that, so.
Absolutely. But then beyond there, it has the deadline for written questions being like two weeks later. And so they would, anybody finding out about it, interested, they would come to the pre-proposal meeting, they may have questions that they would submit. And then how do we respond to those? We had the suggestion that there be a comment, comments or the questions all answered, and then all of the interested parties receive the answers to those questions. And Mr. Seacrest sent an email about this to me and to you, too.
Yes. I think it's a good idea. Of course, we intended to provide the responses to the questions, but spelling it out will make for a more transparent process, which is the recommendation we got from Mr. Seacrest, and I agree. My suggestion would be to, at that deadline for written questions, notice of intense response, information, January 31st, I would suggest we add responses will be posted by February 7th, 2018, which is one week, and that should be ample time for us to turn them around.
Okay.
And then the other timing response or comment we got from Mr. Seacrest was to push back the submittal deadline at least by one week, but maybe by three weeks. Which I guess I would suggest for this evening that part of your motion be to permit some administrative revision to this timeline, to make sure that we can be effective in distribution. And I would suggest that you delegate that responsibility to the township manager.
Okay. And I'm all fine with that. Okay. So then, does the motion need to be adjusted, then?
Yeah.
Yes. So would you like to?
I could amend the motion to permit administrative review to the timeline, be applied, permit by the manager.
Okay, so we have a motion by Bellinger to permit administrative review of the timeline?
Revisions, revisions to the timeline.
Didn't you make a motion?
Yep, we're amending it now.
So we have a motion-
We're going to have, we're going to have a discussion on this.
Yes. Right. So we had a motion by Bellinger and support by Chick to permit administrative-
Revisions to the timeline.
Revisions to the timeline.
By the manager.
By the manager. Oh, okay. Okay, so do you want, would you like to discuss that, Mr. Docket? Go ahead.
No, I want to discuss my packet. Number three, Northville, it says, it says, Northville Township Manager. Number four, Stevens, Township Manager. Number-
He's looking at all the memos.
Number five, Township Manager. I mean, why are we calling it Whitmore? I mean, I've always thought of this since I've been on the board. It's Northville Township. Whenever I come to this board meeting, I'm thinking of this area, this place, as Northville Township. I don't see Whitmore Lake on anything that we deal with here. So I, I don't get it. Why we're spending all this time talking about this when we call it, we all call it Northville Township.
Okay. Any more comments about the amendment? Okay, all in favor of the amendment, say aye.
I'd like to have that reread.
Okay, we have a motion by Bellinger, support by Chick to permit-
I can't hear you.
We have a motion by Bellinger, support by Chick, to permit administrative revisions by the manager to the timeline. Am I accurate?
Yep, we have revisions, administrative revision to the timeline for the RFP here, by the manager.
Okay. Okay. Are we okay for a vote now? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
No.
Okay, we have one no, Mr. Docket. Okay, that passes. Now we'll go back to the main motion. And that was by Ms. Chick and support by Ms. Bellinger to release the RFP.
As amended.
As amended.
With Whitmore Lake's common Northville Township.
Right, with Whitmore Lake, common Northville Township. Okay, we will, let's just have a roll call vote on this one.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chocly?
Yes. Okay, thank you, that passes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Looking forward to this. Pardon? Oh, yeah, well, I don't know, the doc, yeah, don't go away yet. Number four is consider the conditional use approval for the Ann Arbor Dog Training Club. Did you want to make a motion?
So I will make a motion to approve the conditional use for the Ann Arbor Dog Training Club with conditions stated in the Planning Commission, Planning Commission Report. Recommendation for approval.
My support.
Okay. Motion by Chick, support by Bellinger. Do you have any more discussion on this item? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Chocly?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Okay, that passes. Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is the Downtown Strategic Action Plan Recommendation. And we all received some information in the, in our packet. I would like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the DDA and Planning Commission to approve the downtown plan as policy and incorporate the plan into the next master plan update.
Support.
So motion by Chocly, support by Chick. Any discussion on this, Ms. Bellinger?
I was a little, I think we're talking about these, but I didn't receive any of these in with this, in with this packet. So I was a little dismayed that there was not any reminder graphic or whatnot. I don't know if others received that or not, but that was-
We have the big boards downstairs even in the, you know, we've dealt with this a few times, and even at the joint meeting, so this was, is just formality. Any other comments on this one?
I just, if I may-
Ms. Zellner, go ahead.
Ms. Chick, it was, I read the minutes. I did not watch the meeting at the Planning Commission. There were no changes or no recommendations?
No, comments in approval, yeah. Everybody thought that it was really well done and put in a lot of work, yeah.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you.
So if there's no more questions, comments, we'll have another roll call vote, please.
Otto?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Manley?
Yes.
Docket?
No.
Chocly?
Yes. Okay. All right, thank you, that passes. The next item is the Medical Marijuana Dispensary Discussion.
What number's that?
That was number thirteen, and now it's five A.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Chick, go ahead.
So I asked for this to be on the agenda, because we had been getting interest from people coming to the township, asking about dispensaries. We had people that, assuming we're promoting dispensaries, come to the podium and speak to the board about considering it. The question had been coming up a lot recently, and especially with the licensing issue coming up in December 15th, which we actually thought was when we had to decide to opt in or opt out of medical dispensaries. But recently just found out that that was not necessarily the case. But it did generate a lot of conversation. So I thought, since we always want to be communicative with the public, that we'd put it out there and let the public speak to the issue. And we got a lot of responses. We've gotten emails, we've got, well, the posting on the Facebooks. There was actually three different sites on Facebook where people were commenting. And at one point, there was 148 comments, and I just stopped counting after that. But there's a lot of interest in it in the township, and I think it's worthy of a discussion. I understand that there's a lot of controversy about the issue. There's a lot of old stigmas attached to it. There's a lot of, I mean, you can find a position on one side and then find a counter position on the other side. So there's a lot of educating to be done to the public and for our board members. I basically had very little knowledge about medical marijuana dispensaries and what, how they operate, or what their impact on the community was, or who frequented them. And I've learned a lot. I've really learned a lot. And I, I was surprised that my position on it had been changing from not even wanting to discuss it to thinking it's worthy of discussion, because you can see the number of people and hear from the number of people that are interested in discussing it and either want to see it or don't want to see it. But most important issues are controversial, and they do create a lot of emotion for people. I'm hoping that we can look at this from a neutral position, be objective, do our research on it. I purposely tried to stay away from looking at research or articles that were either sponsored by medical marijuana dispensaries or people that were, that used it, because I wanted to know what, I want to say professionals, but that's probably not the right word. But I did get information from the AMA, and I did get information from the Mayo Clinic. And the AMA basically said, well, they're rejecting the whole idea because it's still considered illegal federally. However, in the very next paragraph, they said that they do recognize the benefit of the product for helping people that have issues, chronic pain, neurological disorders, those things that were mentioned here in the building, or the, I'm sorry, room, meeting room. And then Mayo Clinic also said the same thing. So it's, it is possible, I, Ms. Keen, who spoke to it, said, maybe the people that are actually in the dispensaries that are, you know, selling the product, don't have enough information about dosing or how to use it. I don't know where you would get that. But I think that, I don't think that we should just dismiss the prospect of a dispensary anywhere in any community, just because we don't quite understand it. There are people that are abusing opiates. I mean, I'm talking about doctors. I mean, I understand that it's easy to get a medical card for medical marijuana from a doctor, just go in and say, hey, I got a backache, you know, or I got a leg ache, I need something, and nothing's working. So they freely give out medical marijuana cards typically. But you can do the same thing with opiates. You can, I've seen it in the dental practice. I mean, it's, you can't just say this happens, and with medical marijuana, it happens in everywhere. Everything that anybody can use, they can abuse it. So I just want to open up the discussion so that we can all do more research on it and come to a good decision.
Ms. Otto?
So this is where I would think the discussion has to happen, because we can go all over the board and discuss the legalization of marijuana until we're blue in the face. But that's not what we're here for. We're not here to discuss whether it's good or bad. We're not here to discuss whether opiate crisis is in Michigan, which it is. We're not here to discuss the use of it or anything. We're here to discuss whether we are going to have one of the five, which is a dispensary growth, transportation, or production of medical marijuana in the township. So that's what should be on the table. So first and foremost, I will let people know, I do have family members that have medical marijuana cards for reasons of Alzheimer's and stage four cancer. With that said, I will tell the board and the community, I am not for it in Northville Township for a number of reasons. And this is the reason. License issuance. Once a township opts in and drafts and approves an ordinance, the township has no say over who is given the license to. The state then, once they send in for their license, the state approves that person. The township cannot have any jurisdiction over who gets the license or who does not get the license. Two, the ordinance. The ordinance has to be the same for all businesses, as it is for the medical marijuana dispensary, such as signs. So if you discount signs for one business, you have to discount them for all businesses. The only thing that we could do under the ordinance is determine the distance between schools. And right now, our downtown area is a mile, a mile and a half from two schools. So for me, at this point, our downtown is not even the area of which a medical dispensary could even be in. Whitmore Lake Road, we have a high school that is less than a mile from the light industrial area of Whitmore Lake Road. That wouldn't be an area that we would have it in. The only alternative that we would have to have it in is in, is in the RTM district. And there's not even buildings out there for it. So that means that somebody would have to actually build something. The other thing has to do with revenue. Everybody talks that we're getting a lot of revenue from this, so let's do the math. The math is that there is a 3% tax on all medical marijuana distribution. Out of that 3% tax, the townships will get 24% of that. That means the number of townships and the number of facilities are divided within that 24% of the 3%. So while we're thinking we're getting a lot of money, we're really not. Licensing, licensing for a medical marijuana dispensary is only $5,000. To produce it, to grow it, is $10,000. The township will only get a minimum of $5,000 of that. We're not going to have a lot of people, a lot of dispensaries in our township. If we have one or two, you're not getting a lot of money from that. So just based on that, and I'm not talking about the criminal aspect of it or anything, but just based on those facts, because the township has no control over the regulations of it, I'm not opting, I wish not to opt in for it.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Otto. Let's see if we have anybody else like to speak.
Yeah, I guess to follow up kind of what Jackie said, she had a lot more knowledge on it, but the city of Detroit, I just read, they closed down a good majority of their dispensaries, and they were tightening up, tightening up their rules on them, and the voters voted to relax the rules. So, it's taking away, any kind of licensing bypasses the city of Detroit and opts into the licensing issued by the state. So, now in Detroit, you can be within five hundred feet of a school or religious institution. So, that kind of worries me that the voters can always take away the rights of the board and the councils. And then looking at numbers, Livingston County, we're worried about their patients. They have two thousand car holders. Washtenaw County has fifty-six hundred car holders. So, you're looking at, what, six thousand people? I think those people can drive, you know, fifteen minutes, like we said, to Ann Arbor. And I can't find the financial benefit of anything that I've read at this point. Again, my mind is still open, but nothing that I have found has convinced me otherwise, looking at the business aspect of it.
Ms. Chick.
I just wanted to respond to a couple of things. My understanding, if you are not growing it in the dispensary, that is considered retail, correct? That's my, that's what I was understanding. Okay, so, we allow retail in general commercial areas. We have several general commercial areas from North Territorial all the way out to the northwest corner of Twenty-three and Eight Mile. So, there are several places not near schools that a dispensary could be put. A grow would have to be out somewhere else. And I totally lost train of thought. Oh, I think a lot of the reasons, if you, the, there were, they were closing a lot of dispensaries, but it was licensing issues, so they had to rear up their license by December fifteenth. That's all they had to do.
But, there is, currently, there is no licensing for medical marijuana dispensaries. But, that will be, there will be, as of December fifteenth. That's why.
Even if we said, yes, we want it, the dispensary, it's not going to happen tomorrow. There's a, and we do have.
You have to have an ordinance in place.
Yes, we do.
Before.
We'd have to have an ordinance.
Before the state will even issue a license within the township.
That's right, so we'd have to do ordinance first, but on the zoning issue. I totally forgot what I was going to say now.
About the zoning?
About the zoning, yeah. Oh, signage, the signage, that is correct. We have signing ordinances, and you can't, so a dispensary would have to comply with our zoning ordinances. It doesn't mean that we can't tell them they can't have a sign, it has to be a certain kind of sign. It has to have certain language on it, that does not mean they can't have a sign.
Well, I think somebody said if you didn't want a marijuana leaf on the front of it, that you can require them not to have it, and that's not true.
Do we have dispense, are you familiar with any of the ordinances for dispensaries in any of your areas that you work? Okay, thank you.
I'll offer just a few comments. It was brought up, the zoning issue. There are kind of two ways that townships and cities are looking at this. One is through the general ordinance, which would usually be used to handle a licensing issue and licensing regs to qualify businesses. The second is that there really is a requirement to zone it, which is a planning and land use. And just like any use that has impacts, you can consider zoning standards as well. The sign ordinance issue is, you know, the township right now is revising the sign ordinance to eliminate content-based regulations, but not design-based regulations. We haven't looked specifically at this type of issue, but regulating aesthetics, to my knowledge, is still a valid purpose for a sign ordinance.
And I just, one more comment about, we've been hearing the comment that people can drive to Ann Arbor, and I think there actually is one in Ypsilanti, too.
Yes.
Or they can go to Lansing. Well, I mean, if that's our thought process, then when we hear people say, well, we want to get a grocery store in downtown Whitmore Lake, and people say, well, why? We can go to Ann Arbor or Brighton. So, I mean, it can't apply to one type of facility and not another type of facility, so that's just my comment.
But, everybody goes to grocery stores, not everybody goes to medical marijuana dispensaries. Everybody goes to a grocery store, not everybody goes to a medical marijuana dispensary.
Not the back and forth here. Let's, Ms. Bellinger.
I don't have the exact name of it, but isn't there a federally approved marijuana-derived Marinol or something of this nature? I'm not sure, but something along that line that is given to people that have the issues with the cancer and the, whatever, debilitating of one kind or another. Who is being denied medical marijuana, I don't see that people are currently. You know, we don't have a pharmacy, we won't very soon, but yet we're talking about dispensaries. You know, I mean, I'm going to say, I mean, I would hope that not having dispensaries and other operations of this nature in the township would be very attractive, a very attractive way to differentiate Northfield Township from surrounding communities. And clearly, it would be a detriment to our community to engage in federally illegal activities in our township. This is, this is illegal federally. I mean, no matter how, no matter how much you might want to entertain it. It's, I, I find no reason to support this, and for people that don't want to drive a couple miles north or south or whatever, you know, it sounds ridiculous to me. Thank you.
Mr. Dockett.
Well, I don't know very much about medical marijuana, I don't use it, and I don't intend to use it. But, as Jackie said about a license, well, we won't be able to figure out who's going to get it. If somebody goes for a liquor license, we can't, I don't think, I don't think we can say, well, you can't, you can't have one, but you can, so I don't go along with that. Not that I'm trying to do anything, but I just mean, it doesn't make sense to me. I do have rheumatoid arthritis, and I take a lot of medicine. I understand it is helpful, from some people tell me, for osteo, I don't have osteo, so I don't think it could help me. And besides, it's legal. I see nothing wrong with it, because it's legal. Just because we've never had it before, I guess that's part of the problem, but I guess I'm, there's two whistles, that's on one side and the rest on the other, but that's it for me, thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Selna.
So, on the zoning, is there specific areas we could zone specifically for medical marijuana? So, commercial right now, it could go, but could we just say within this portion of commercial?
The Planning Commission has the ability to set, you know, it could be a conditional use in any particular district that they come up with, the Planning Commission has that kind of control. And being a conditional use means you can put conditions on it. So, if it's going to exist in a, in a particular place, they can say, well, that's too close to the school, or, you know, there can be rules set up for that. And we currently have a medical marijuana home occupation in the zoning ordinance, so people can grow their own, and there are rules associated with that, but that's not, that's not even a conditional use. I believe that's just.
So, areas that could be, would be along Whitmore Lake Road?
If you're talking about general commercial, it could be, it doesn't have to be associated with general commercial, it could be associated with one of the other districts, depending on what it is.
Could we create a new district at all?
I don't know that we could create a new district, I mean, isn't that, wouldn't that be sort of spot zoning, Paul?
Yeah, I'm just, I mean, can we limit it to areas that?
So, I mean, you're talking about introducing at least one new use, maybe as many as five new uses into the zoning ordinance. So, you would have to define those use, define the places where those uses are appropriate. If it's a special conditions use, any standards associated with the development, including site plan standards, which might be the design aesthetic of the building. It's, and I would probably recommend, since the township is looking at a master plan update, that if they were to consider this issue, it would be part of a master plan discussion. Because I would consider this to be modification of the zoning ordinance. We could review the master plan to see if there's any support in the master plan for new emerging uses. I've not prepared that presentation this evening. Certainly, the state act provides that communities can opt out, which is a reasonable decision that many cities and townships are making as well.
So, you think, again, Paul, one thing you said, you would consider it a modification to the zoning. What was that again? If we went forward without, without including it into the master plan?
It's a, it's a planning issue, it's a new use, and the place and nature of businesses and uses is something that the township does through the planning process. The zoning act can be modified, but a justification to that modification in the master plan is one of the things Planning Commission will look at in making, you know, hearing, basically, considering any text amendment to the zoning ordinance. That starts at Planning Commission, they'll make a recommendation to the board for approval of text amendments, and that's a regular process, the township considers it. And anytime you look at an amendment, it's generally been found to be consistent with the master plan, and the master plan is updated every five years. The regular ordinance, which you would use to control business regulations, is a different process that maybe the township attorney could advise you on if you want questions about that.
And so, you know, talking to people, reading different information, I mean, for my, the community seems to be kind of split. That's just my personal opinion. You can go and find stuff, I think I'm done with you, Paul, so you can, you can find stuff to support your position, you can find stuff to not support your position, or vice versa. So, no matter what the position it is, that's just my opinion, is that I think the community, based on what I've seen and read and talked to, is pretty split. I think an advantage of having a dispensary is that it, it requires testing so people know what, what product they are getting. I think, I mean, as a thought, I mean, you know, how do we educate the people? Maybe we put it on, on a ballot. We have a lot of elections coming up next year, as a thought. I think the board is sort of split, I think the public is sort of split, maybe we ask them.
Ms. Otto.
So, in a recent article that everybody received, and it was from the article on clearing the haze on medical marijuana, there was a section in there, how can the townships regulate? And it says, if your board decides to adopt an ordinance authorizing medical marijuana facilities, it's a good idea to adopt companion regulations. Your ordinance could address issues such as zoning setbacks from schools and other areas, buildings, noise, and light. It, it says, local ordinance are prohibited from regulating the purity or pricing of marijuana. They can't interfere or conflict with the statutory regulations for licensing the facility. Some communities have complained about the physical appearance of the medical marijuana provisioning centers. So, they said your board must, they said, while it may be possible to regulate this through zoning, townships could use caution. Your board must treat all commercial or industrial entities equally and cannot have a separate set of regulations for provisioning centers, which means we cannot just have a provision or a regulation just for medical marijuana facilities.
And rightfully so.
Signs and other aspects in its zoning ordinance for specific districts. So, we can only do it on a specific district and not on a specific industry or entity. They said if you have specific regulations for dispensaries, that will be difficult to support legally.
Where is this article from?
The MTA.
But, I have to say that we have very good standards for new businesses coming into the township. They have to, they have to comply with the new standards we, you were part of creating some of the standards for new businesses, and the parents in the township, yes.
In the zoning ordinance?
Yes.
Yeah, we, we did do some upgrades there, but.
But, what I was trying to emphasize is that we cannot just do something because it's a medical marijuana facility.
We wouldn't. Right. Well, this is a pretty complex and pretty extensive. It's not just, oh, yes, we want it, or no, we don't, you know? It's, once you have it, I mean, there's a whole lot of steps you would go through to establish whether it could be here or not, and the ramifications of that. I don't know that the board, well, we haven't had time to study all of that at this point. It's not a priority for me, because we have got, I mean, we're going to go through our priorities in a minute, but we have a lot on our plate right now, and this will take a significant amount of time for this board to, to really do this justice. So, we can talk about it here at this meeting, but I think in order to be prepared in the end for a, an intelligent vote on this, it will take some time to do. So, I don't intend to vote at, this evening. I am, I'm personally concerned about our, you know, the ability of our police force to manage anything that could go on. I'm concerned about the young people and the message it sends. I'm concerned about the fiscal impact to this community for having a facility. So, I don't have enough information at this point. I'm leaning against it, strongly leaning against it, because I, it's not, like, it's not available for those who are medically, medical need of it. Ms. Bellinger.
Thank you, Marlene. Do you think maybe, is the chief, maybe would like to chime in on any part of this conversation? Thank you.
I guess I'll start by saying I certainly am not opposed to medical marijuana. I have family and I have friends that both use it in the appropriate manner, and I have family and friends that use it in the inappropriate manner. So, having said that, Ms. Bellinger did ask me to try to bring some statistics, and I did research like all of you, and I think I found that for every article I found that was for it, I could find something that was against it. Dispensaries are relatively new in Michigan, so there's not a lot of statistics. However, I am aware of instances in Ann Arbor and Ypsilanti both, when dispensaries opened, where there were robbery-type of criminal activity and burglary-type. I have concerns, depending on where the board may choose to locate one of these facilities. For instance, if we were to locate it right downtown on Main Street, I would have concerns that the neighbors, business neighbors, might not welcome that for various reasons. I think, I hear people say there's not a criminal aspect to it, but I, I believe it could be a target for robberies. One, because there's a lot of cash flow that goes through these types of businesses. And two, the product that they're serving in there would be desirable to some people that might not want to use it in a legal manner. So, I have been, I've never been in a dispensary in Ann Arbor, I've been next to a couple of them, and, and there definitely was in both cases complaints from the neighbors and an odor coming from those facilities that might not be welcoming to our downtown businesses. Again, if the board chooses to go with a dispensary or grow operations or whatever, you know, we as the police department, we will. you know, we, as the police department, we will do our diligence to do the best we can to keep everybody, every business safe. It then becomes locally a legal business. Ms. Bellinger is correct. It's still considered illegal under federal law, but we, as the police department, will do our best to, you know, keep everybody safe in every business and every residence in the community. But my personal and professional opinion this time is, I just don't think it's a good idea for Northfield Township. We're just not, you know, I don't want to say you want to hide such a thing, but in Ann Arbor, it's a large, large community where those businesses can exist, and, you know, we're so, our downtown area, the areas that we're talking about are relatively small. And I guess it's just my opinion, and I don't have anything other than opinion, I don't have statistics to back that up. I just don't think it's a good idea for Northfield Township.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Chick.
So I just have a question for anybody, and maybe you can, there is the possibility that in 2018, they, Michigan will legalize marijuana-
That's correct.
-for recreational use. Do you know, I don't know if anybody knows, will that create the need for regulations on the quality, or?
You know, it's kind of like when the medical marijuana law was passed, and we would go to these meetings, and there were so many unknowns, and it's the same thing that we're going to run into when these dispensaries start opening up legally through state law. There's a lot of unknowns, and they don't know how they're going to handle it. We didn't know how we were going to handle these medical marijuanas. I think, I think from the perspect, or the aspect of personal use and growers, I think we've got that pretty well understood now from the user end of it, as well as the law enforcement and enforcement of it. But now we're, you know, we've changed the law, and now we're looking at allowing these dispensaries, and I just don't think we have all the answers to, to how we will deal with that. And if and when they completely legalize marijuana, you know, that will be another step that will, those are things that'll have to be figured out. So I don't really have a good answer to your question, I guess.
That's okay. I didn't know that anybody did right now, because we're so busy.
Okay, any last minute comments here by the board? And then I'd like us to move on. I don't think we'll be making any motions at this point.
So what's our next steps?
Well, it has to be a priority. Go ahead.
I just wanted to make a comment that, a couple of things, that no party can force the township to opt in or to grant operations, if opting in. A township can opt out at any time, or opt in at any time. And that a township doesn't need to take action. Just because we don't take action doesn't mean that it's not going to happen. We can, the township can change its mind at any time.
Right. But if we do nothing, we are opted out. If we do nothing, we are opted out.
Right.
So we are currently opted out. Okay. So we can, when we get to our priorities-
I would second something, if you want to do something.
I think this requires a lot more discussion.
A lot more discussion, and I think it, you know, as we look at our priorities for the year ahead and try to get that all in order, if this fits in there and becomes a priority, then we work on it. If it doesn't, then we wait a while until it becomes a priority.
I would like to, there was someone that Mary Sharp had indicated would be a good resource to, as someone to speak to.
Well?
I'll make a comment.
Go ahead, Ms. Otto.
Back in the time when the intellectual, well, the IT industry went from 2000, from 1999 to 2000, there was a bunch of lawmakers and entities that cropped up to say how they're going to secure your data when 2000 hit. And I'm not saying that these aren't the same one, but they're taking, some of these legal firms are taking opportunities right now because they see that there's a legal aspect to it and that they can assist us. Township has a good attorney, and the attorney firm that we use is for the township specifically, and they could and have the same means of looking for the same information for medical marijuana that these other attorneys proclaim that they are experts in.
I would just think that we should get some professional people with resources.
I'd actually-
Not with resources, with resources that they can give us information.
I actually second what Jackie said, that there's a lot of sharks out there right now with this, with this, obviously, there's a lot of money involved in this new business.
I'd like to say something to Jackie, too. How about all the millions of dollars with the generators that were, because we, they said, "Well, we won't have electricity, the clocks are going to", we spent millions and that.
Companies spent billions and billions of dollars just to secure their data, just so it wouldn't, they wouldn't lose it in 2000, and nothing happened.
Okay. Okay. Can we move on then? All right. Next item we have on the agenda, so we are done discussing medical marijuana for the The next item on the agenda is the zoning administrator in office cost evaluation, and Mr. Ains has looked into this for us, so I'll let you deal with that, Mr. Ains.
Thank you. Can everybody hear me? I thought so. Okay. This had been looked at by the planning consultant and the prior city, our town manager, before, so actually, a lot of this was already prepared, but I had it updated for you. In the budget this year, you had specifically set aside four hours per week for the zoning administrator to be here, and it's actually in the fine print under that line item in the budget. So the cost for that is $60 an hour, if you had her here for, say, five hours a week, and that works out to the numbers I've given you. In addition to that, I've been advised by the firm that travel time is billable, as they do with their other people. So you're actually picking up another $60 an hour for each time that she's coming. Also, Paul, maybe you can describe to what extent she would be able to do other work besides the regular work that you and I had talked about?
Sure. So-
Get up there.
Good evening. Currently, Vidia handles a lot of questions on the phone and does a lot of email responses and builds hourly work. The goal in bringing her to township is that that work could be completed at the township, the work that is not generated by the zoning compliance fees. Vidia also, a part of her work is writing zoning compliance letters to deal with applications. And the amount of applications she's done, the initial proposal that we prepared when you authorized the zoning administrator, said that she needed to do that work, prepare zoning compliance letters off-site. And the main reason for this is because when she's on-site, the point is for her to talk to the township, handle questions, and to talk to, do counter service. So I believe that there will be a cost savings. Essentially, all the hourly work that Vidia does, I think, can be moved into this chunk of time where she's on-site, and that she'll also be able to handle some new services that are currently not being done, related to providing on-site counter services. So this is something that was requested, included, and in the budget, and I think you have an estimate this evening for your approval.
So I have a, Mr. Ains's memo seems to say that there's really no time left in, if things keep going at the rate it is, there's really no money left to pay for her to be on-site. But it seems to me, if she's here for four hours, she's not going to be at the counter for four hours, and she's not going to be, I mean, it seems like a lot of the phone calls, the, you know, the background, the stuff she needs to do in preparing when she sits down to do the zoning compliance forms, she would already have done here. So it seems like there could be some, you know, as you say, some cost savings that way.
I think there will be cost savings, because right now Vidia does a lot of hourly work, and that work, I think, will be done on-site, and I think the preference of the board is to have that work done on-site.
Well, I personally think it'd be great to have her here for four hours a week. I'm just concerned about us blowing by our budget if we've already shot through a quarter of it in the first quarter here.
I think the good news is that you have already authorized her services. Basically, what you're approving is for her to come in four hours a week. If at any point you decide there isn't budget left, you'd want her to stop coming, I think you basically have to just tell us, you know, "We're going to hold off", or, "You know what? We'd like you to come every other week." So if the need changes, we're happy to respond to that.
Okay. Mr. Docket.
Well, of course, this guy works for McKenna, and so does this person, so you know where he's coming from, you know? He's trying to produce more money for his company. But I want a little explanation on the, about the center of the front page, where it says $18,000 in the year, then it says underneath it, the overtime is $14,000. Is this right? Is this a total of $30,400, or am I not reading this right?
If you look at the numbers, it says $60 times 300 equals $18,000. That's based on the five hours here and the one-hour travel time a week, based on 50 weeks a year.
So, so what is, what's the line under it? It says 60 times 4.
Yeah, it says not counting travel time, it would be $60 times 4, $240. And that's the $14,400 that's-
So, so you're jumping from the 14, 4, if you're there, to 18, is that, is that, is the total 18,000 a year? Is that what we're voting on?
Yes, but I tried to make it clear, but maybe I wasn't.
Well, it doesn't, but I noticed that this proposal was made when Fink was here, he turned it down. So, on the last page, they made pretty much the same proposal to Howard Fink back then. So I certainly will not support this, but I'm one person.
Ms. Chick.
So basically, what I'm reading here is that there's $9,000 left in the budget to pay Vidia to be in the office, correct?
For the rest-
For the rest of the fiscal year, right?
Rest of the fiscal year.
Okay, so why can't we just amend her hours to accommodate that $9,000 instead of taking more out of the budget for more time? How much, how many hours would that give her?
Well, we're saying that she's, well, the memo says that she's used up, she'll be using it up at the rate of $3,000 every quarter, so she'll use that all up, and she's not in the office at all at this point.
I guess the thing that I wasn't clear on, and Paul has tried to explain to me, is that the work she would be doing outside of the office is reimbursed through the different fees and charges that you have. So what he's saying is that she could do everything that you're paying directly within the current budget. And as far as the time amount per week, I think that would fluctuate, probably, certain times of the year, you're not going to be as busy as other times, but, you know, we figure you could get the four hours a week on an average, but like, if you're in the middle of winter and there aren't any projects on the slate, you wouldn't be having her come, you know? So there'd be some flexibility that way. But Paul-
Okay, so this is a recommendation, basically, that we can, we could go ahead and do it based on what we have already set aside in the budget.
For McKenna, for her.
For McKenna, for her.
Yeah, based on what McKenna has provided to me now, that's, my understanding is you have enough money in this year's budget.
Okay.
The reason that it shows up as being from when the prior manager was here, was he asked for the same proposal, got the same information, so when I asked Paul, he gave me that information, that it hadn't changed. And I guess the other part is somehow it ended up in the budget as a footnote, so maybe Mr. Fink did put it in.
No, I did.
Okay, well, you did.
I really did. When I was preparing the budget, I thought it would be of great help, and Mary Byrd is a big proponent of having her around. She can learn a lot from her, and then Vidia can deal directly with some of the applicants. They can make appointments with her. I think it would be a big advantage to our business community especially, to have someone on-site that's that knowledgeable and can walk them through the process better and just make it easier for them.
We can also schedule department meetings and applicant meetings around the times when she's in the office, so that will be additional cost savings.
Savings.
So how much do we have in the budget left for the zoning administrator previously? What we had?
Oh, the prior years?
No, I mean, what we had in place now, without the person leaving. What was in the budget now?
You had $12,000 in the budget, and $3,000 has been spent, so there's $9,000 left.
So there's $9,000 left, okay. Right. But Vidia does come in at other times, and, you know, a lot of her time is reimbursed by the zoning compliance fees.
Yeah, and what, what the advantage is, is this $9,000 could be added to that of which she's already doing some of that.
We would get some sort of economy that way, wouldn't we?
Right.
Yeah. I think it's worth a try. We can always-
Evaluate it.
Change it up, evaluate it after a quarter or something like that. I think it would be helpful. But we better advertise the fact that she's there, you know, when people have questions, you know? Okay.
And I would suggest, if you do this, that you, you assume that during Christmas, New Years, we wouldn't have an eat and that type of thing, so.
Yeah.
We would advertise a chunk of time between now and Christmas, if you approve this, and then that she wouldn't be here for a period of time, and then she'd be back after the first of the year.
And we recommend people make appointments, if at all possible.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Any more, Ms. Bellinger?
Is she in the office at all now, or just by appointment? Is that what I'm understanding? I'm trying to find out, she, she's not at this point, at regular time in the office, once a month, twice a month, or anything at this point?
As needed, on request.
Okay. So to stay within the $9,000 budget, do you think that maybe, it should maybe be three days out of a month, maybe?
That's what I was asking, yeah.
Well, what we were saying is that, that what she is doing already, she's getting charged for, so her just being here, she could do whatever she's already doing, but do it here.
Oh, okay.
And we would be paying the same amount that's already appropriated in our budget form, McKenna, for her, in addition to the $9,000 that's left over.
She doesn't be present then, yet?
Okay. If it doesn't work out, we change it. Right. Yeah.
Mr. Docket.
I'd like to suggest that if you're going to do it, why don't she just work, like, instead of coming three days and paying $60 each way, why don't she just work six hours? Why do we, why do we, why do we want to just pay all this money out for travel time to have her come for two or three hours? I mean, I don't get it.
That would be more efficient.
I don't know if she's available, that six hours at a shot.
I think if we're authorized to do office hours, this was the part of, the thing that was never triggered in the proposal. We can look at that. I know now she's only available four hours. Her schedule could change, but after the initial discussion, I asked her to hold, hold that time, so it's reserved for you if you want to use it.
Where did, they come up with $60 for travel time? What does that entail?
That's her hourly rate. I don't, she'll bill actual time. It might take her a half hour to get here.
Oh, okay.
But for the purposes of budget, I think that that was a conservative estimate.
Ms. Selma.
So how do we advertise-
So how do we advertise this? And how will people know that she's going to be in office? And is it by appointment, or is it going to be scheduled? The logistics?
Website.
I can let, go ahead, and then I'll fill in if I have things.
I believe through the website, through the different social media that you use, through the newsletter, through the newspaper. But I think it should say that the preference is that people make appointments. And if they don't, then the question is, can they make it within that timeframe? And if they haven't made an appointment, she has to take the appointment people first. Because it's first come, first served type thing. But I think we can work out the schedule. I was just trying to estimate if you had her here the whole time, throughout the whole year, that it might create a budget problem. But in talking to Paul, I think there's the flexibility. The, the travel time, I was figuring half an hour each way. So that's where you get the hour. And a lot of professionals bill you on travel time. In fact, in some other jobs, I would travel, like to an attorney's office or a consultant's, because it was less expensive to pay me than it was to pay them. And so that's not unusual among professional firms.
And how will we measure that it's working? How will we know?
We can report on how many people use the service, basically. As to how effective it would be, we can ask people if they're willing to give us comments on it afterwards.
There, there should be some level of satisfaction too, though. Mary gets, Mary Bird gets calls a lot, and she's trying to counsel, you know, businesses or homeowners when they want to come in. And, you know, and she can say, well, would you like to meet with the zoning administrator who can, you know, kind of help them through it all? And that would free up Mary too, which would be really helpful. Because sometimes she knows the answers to a lot, but she doesn't know all the answers. So it would be really helpful for her. I think there would hopefully be some feedback on an improved process from, from those who are using it.
Yeah, I mean, based on the concerns that we have heard from our residents, I think it's worth trying to improve the process.
I do too.
And it, based on what Ms. Strains has said, it's going to be budget neutral, obviously, other than the travel time that may take a few of the hours. So I think it's worth it. I think maybe we want to reevaluate it end of March, see how it's going.
Does somebody have a motion?
Well, Tom, well, I can have a motion, but Tom's got a question.
Just a quick question. Have we even talked about what day of the week this may be, or what time of day? Has that been talked about, or is that her schedule?
It will be dependent on her schedule. I think she said she was available Thursday mornings.
Okay.
And it's possible that she would adjust it on request, but I would recommend it's not part of the motion, because she, she might not be able to accommodate it.
Okay, thank you.
At least we have an office available for her on Thursday mornings.
That's great.
So she could do, do her stuff, you know, generally, anyway. Okay, great. Well, I will make a motion that we direct the township manager to go ahead and contract with McKenna for zoning administration work for four hours a week. Support. Motion by Chockley, support by Manley.
Another question. Now, is she is currently doing this work?
She is at home. She's not here on site.
So this really isn't any different than her just doing it on site? She's already doing this work?
She's doing the write-ups at home, and she makes phone calls generally. And she, she will do it on an appointment basis here already.
But this brings her in-house so that we can have her help when we have people with building and compliance issues and so forth, business concerns and...
And that, that would be another advantage. She can check out some of the issues that we have going on around here at, you know, times that are slow.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Again, Mary deals with all these different parties that come in, and she can always tell them now that the zoning administrator will be here on such, such a day in these hours, and can actually arrange appointments and so forth. So I think word of mouth to a lot of the people coming in anyway is the major way it'll get advertised.
Is this three hours a day or four hours a day?
Four.
Four hours a day? Okay, thanks.
Would it be eight to, eight to noon, or? Well, she can figure it out. Nine to one, whatever.
Well, whatever it is, it's going to be an hour less, because she's got to drive both ways, so.
No, it, it's...
So I, when you say three hours...
It'll be four hours.
Are you talking about two hours, or are you telling, if you say four hours, are you talking about three hours?
Four hours in the office. Four hours in the office.
And an hour each way, so that's five hours.
Right, five hours.
Well, let's say five hours then. Let's not say four hours. Well, I mean, hey, it's, it's sixty bucks an hour.
Okay.
Four hours plus drive.
The motion was, uh...
That's what I would recommend.
Yeah, four hours plus drive time. Okay. So the motion was to direct the township manager to contract with McKenna for zoning administration services for four hours per week in the office, plus drive time.
Support.
Okay. Well, Manley already supported it. We're just, we're just going to do a roll call vote now.
Manley, yes. Otto, yes. Zelnik?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Dockett?
No.
Chockley?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Thank you very much. That passes. All right. The next item is, oh, prioritize goals from the board retreat. Okay. I've got this nice little spreadsheet that's mostly filled out. Oh, you got some too?
Oh, I did.
I don't have, I don't have Mr. Dockets or Ms. Belliger's priorities on here, but if you wanted to throw them on while we're waiting, I mean, Ms. Otto could start out and kind of brief us on this whole project.
What is it?
So when we met on our, on our retreat, on our board retreat, I took all the, the notes and everything that everybody provided. And this is basically how I've done it in previous, in my previous positions, where we had to come up with a pillar, or you can call it anything, but it's divided it into groups. So we're not focusing, so our focus, so the focus is on what we're doing. And then based within that, we have goals within it, and then objectives in it. So we're able to measure ourselves already meeting our goals. So that's really how I set this up, is each one of these are things that we need to focus on, but within those, we have objectives that we need to focus on. So good example is the first one, operations and efficiencies. Truly, we had three things in those. And based on the notes and everything, there were three things that came in there. Organizational chart, which we've already addressed, that one's done. The office streamlining, and the office efficiencies. So based on the office streamlining, we had the employee handbook, the employee salary survey, software and hardware upgrades. And then the same with office efficiencies, building department, office space efficiencies, and record retention. We had to put these into groups, because if we looked at them as every milestone, it would be, it would be over encompassing, overwhelming. What I think we need to do tonight is, in each of these, and what I said, I, I think Marlene asked, is to pick out two priorities. That doesn't mean that we're not going to pay attention to the rest of them. So example on here is land use and development. We have seventy-five Barker, master plan, and other. If we only pick two on here, that doesn't mean that we're not going to pick the other one. It's just that the other two have priorities, which means they will have deadlines and everything ahead of the other ones, the other one. What I'd also like to do in this is identify who's going to be responsible for championing, and I say championing each of these. So it could be, even when we get down to land use and development, the master plan, it's not necessarily the township board that's going to champion the master plan. It will probably be the planning commission that champions that. And so we're going to be expecting something from them on each of these areas. Well, the downtown revitalization, that one will be the DDA. The other land preservation committee, that will come from the committee itself. And then we have residential, commercial, the development, and master plan review. Each of these will probably have somebody identified as having, that they will champion. Does that make sense?
Makes sense.
So I think what I was, when Marlene and I got together and started looking at this and reviewing it, because my initial draft I sent out to everyone, Marlene and I got together and reviewed it and identified, let's take out some redundancies in this. Let's clean it up a little bit with the language to make it sound better. I mean, I just took a really quick stab at it one night while I had time, and pulled it all together. But Marlene and I sat down for almost three hours, I think we did. It was supposed to be an hour. It ended up to be three, going through all this. And then we wanted to bring it to everyone and say, okay, what is, what do you identify as your priorities? And then let's identify who should be responsible for each of the milestones in this, so we can reach our goals.
I have a question. What, the one that you mentioned that I'm interested in is the employee handbook. Which, which one of them on here is?
That's under operations and efficiencies. So that would be under office streamlining. The very first one.
By Mary.
So what we could do, I'm just...
Yeah, go ahead.
Ms. Bell?
No, that's okay. Okay, go ahead.
What we could do is, we could make recommendations based on the list that was provided, and identify who would be responsible for them. I think we would also want to have a date on, you know, a timeline in which we'd like to see some of this achieved. Some of it may not be achievable. And this, tonight, is not something that we're going to be deciding on. This is still discussion, so.
Ms. Zelnik?
So my only thought was, is with the direction, it was pick two out of each pillar, which I think the organization is very helpful. But what if I don't really like pillar one, and I want five out of the land preservation or the development? So that was my only thought is, maybe I don't want to pick one out of pillar one. I want to pick a three out of pillar four.
Oh, okay.
So that was my only thought on that, is a different prioritization. Maybe my, my high priorities are in a different area, and I think they should be one, two, and three, and not out of that. So, I mean, the organization is necessary. I wasn't sure that it was necessary to pick out of each one or two out of each one.
That was my question as well. I know that, like, there's two pillars, two pillars, I'm tired. In particular, that I thought were, I said I was going to bring this up at the meeting, that if we focus on those two pillars, the other three will fall in line afterwards. But I particularly like the items in the two pillars that I thought were most important. So I, but I, I did the exercise the way it was given to us, so. Yeah, but I think what you're doing too is that we also have a township manager that asked for priorities from us for him.
I see his name on basically everything, so. So I, you know, I think a little bit goes to the DDA, a little bit goes to the planning commission, a little bit goes to land preservation. The rest, looks like it goes to the township manager. So no matter what we pick, he's going to be a busy man. I mean, that's how I actually read it, was most of it is, has his name against it for, except for a few, like the master planners you had mentioned, Ms. Otto, and the land preservation committee. There's a couple in there for the DDA, but the rest pretty much says township manager. So he's going to, I think it's a matter of, at this point, prioritizing. My thought is, anything with the planning commission, we should say, planning commission, go do it. Anything with the DDA, we should say, the board wants you to work on these three items. Anything with the land preservation, the board wants you to work on that. And then I think the leftover, which is probably ninety percent, is township manager assigned next to it based on the document.
Okay, does anybody want to reconstruct this then?
Don't want to reconstruct it.
I mean this. Because you want to, you want to be able to show it in a format, so everybody understands who's doing what.
I think it's, I mean, it basically says it. If you look at, like, office space, okay, let's go into page three, and we look at, okay, the employee handbook on the office streamlining, it says the personnel committee. Then we go into the employee salary study, it says the township manager and the public safety manager. We go into software and hardware, it says the township manager. The only one was the building department. It said the township.
Well, I'm at the township board. It's really us.
Okay, so...
That makes the decide.
I mean, at the end, we do, I mean, the manager will come back with recommendation, even on the building department. I mean, I would almost look at the township manager to take the lead on that, as far as, maybe he can do analysis in other areas of what other people use. Are we in the best practice and work with our planning? So I think the way it's constructed right now, it actually has names pretty much against every task. The only one I think might have been the township. And I actually think it should be the township manager for that, on that one in particular. So I think it's there. Now it's a matter of prioritizing the elements. And then some of them might be, maybe I liked one out of the milestones and not two of them. Like, if I go to actually office efficiencies and the goal, and then we go to the milestone, one is the building department, which is the township will develop a business-friendly development process. Yes. I think our constituents have really asked and said it's too cumbersome the way it is. But office space efficiencies, yeah, that would be nice, but I don't know if that would take priority over updating the website for me. So where I think building department, we need an efficient process. We've heard that from our residents. We've also heard that we're not communicating very well. So I might take the communication one and say, maybe that's one or two, and this is my second one. But office efficiencies and record retention, I'm not so sure. So that's where I was struggling. Like, yep, I want this one, and I want this, but not maybe the full group. And then if we look at the full group, does that take from another?
So do you think you could also base priorities on, on a timeline? That you prefer to have those done first, prior to?
Correct, right.
Record retentions, for example?
Right, right. That's kind of the next step.
Record retention could wait until the end of the year.
Right.
Probably move to next year if we even have to, if it's not something, but...
Right. So that was kind of my, a little bit of my struggle is, like, why, like, one out of the three, and necessarily didn't really, I mean, the organization is fine as far as the pillars and all that. It was just, I might want to subdivide, you know, pick this one, pick that one, pick this one, a little bit more detail, as opposed to one lump. I mean, it's a start.
Okay.
And then...
So would you rather do the priorities by milestones?
Gets pretty detailed. I actually did a little spreadsheet and did it all, and was starting my priorities by milestone, actually. So that one's an interesting one.
Because then that would say that the milestones, the ones that have higher priorities, get done quicker.
Exactly. I mean, it almost has to, because like I said, I'm not sure, record retention, I know it's an important one, but do I want it, put it in the same priority as developing a business-friendly development process? I don't. I really want us to focus on that. And I really want to focus on communication, and I want to focus on revitalizing the downtown, me. So I want, like, subsegments. So that was where I was, I mean, I looked at it probably all weekend, a couple hours a day, every day, just kind of like, mm, mm, how will I do this? And how, which one would I pick? And, I mean, they're all good.
It could be different people doing it, though. We could, you know, the assignment, it could be a high priority, it could be assigned to different, well...
It looks like the township manager gets it up. He's got most of it.
He's got a lot of it, yeah.
When you talk about assignments, does that mean that who gets to pick who's on it? Shouldn't it be volunteer, instead of the board telling, you're going to work on this? How are you going to do assigning?
Well, there are certain people that can do... Well, there are certain people that can do things, like, like our township manager.
Planning mission things and...
And there could also be delegation of duties, so just because you assign this to somebody doesn't mean that they're the ones that are going to do all of it.
Right, but who's assigning it and who's delegating? That's, is the board or is one person on the board?
Aren't we doing this?
I think we're doing it.
Okay.
Yeah. Now, that doesn't mean we can't help, you know, of course, because, well, some of the, I mean, well, yeah.
Because once you approve this, it's the board that's approving the delegate, you know, who's taking the lead, the responsibility for that task. So, I thi- I think we need to refine this a little more, based on, well, here's the feedback. We had seven votes for office streamlining and five for office efficiencies. Yeah, seven and five, so far, and only, well, only because Ms. Dockett and Ms. Bellinger didn't pick two, and that's okay. And then, financial viability, we had seven for fund balance and five for community. Land use and development, seventy-five Barker had seven votes and master plan had six. Capital improvement, wastewater treatment plant had three votes, public safety building at five, and road improvement had three, and seventy-five Barker had two. Public relations, communications had six, board relations had three, and township brand had four. So, you can fill that all in on your sheets. So, the biggest areas are in capital improvements, where we have the wider range, we have a five and two threes. So, what was in capital improvement? Capital improvement, we had wastewater treatment plant had three. And maybe it only got three because some of the items we've already started on, down the road on, like with our rate study and the SAW grants and everything.
Actually, I had a question on that. Pretty much, everything under the wastewater treatment, isn't that being covered right now by the SAW grant? Like, the rate study, the equalization base, I mean, to come up with, basically, is there a need for it, what would be the cost? And then, the upgrades, the same, isn't that all what the SAW grants, so, I mean, I didn't really...
Wouldn't be in there, yeah. It's doing the rate study, but, you know, as far as equalization base, and, yeah, they're to determine the necessity for it, that's all happening already.
Yep, and the same with the, so I didn't pick that because it's already being done by the SAW grant, so that was my comment on that, so.
That is true.
I wasn't sure what the residential audit was, though.
That's to make sure that all of the homes are actually... Being built. Being, no, attached to, we're billing.
They're building and they're attached?
Yeah.
Meaning, they're supposed to be attached, they're using it, and that they're actually paying the bill.
I think there are three, aren't they about three fourths or halfway through, or something?
Over, are you talking about televising the lines?
No, the residential audit.
I don't know, maybe Steve knows.
Yeah, do you know if they started it or if they were?
I'm not sure.
I'd like to get in on this conversation here.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Dockett.
I'd like to have a copy of that in my box.
This?
Please.
Sure.
Because I, I don't, I don't have that information. The other thing I'd like to mention is, about seventy-five Barker, we've talked about that ever since this board has been here. I've heard nothing about it. The fund balance, if we hadn't spent it down to forty-one percent, we wouldn't be having this conversation again. It should have been taken care of, I mean, we're just plowing the same old ground over and over and over. I don't see us making much progress, so. And the employee handbook, we talked about six, seven, eight months ago.
Right.
Nothing's happened. I mean, you know, it just gets sickening after a while to just see the same old thing, same old thing. So, let's pick out a few things and do them, instead of a hundred things that we're not going to do any.
Ms. Chick.
This apparently is going to take a little bit longer conversation. We've got five items to go, can we move on?
We can put together another version of this.
So, what's the next step?
So, I would recommend that we ask Jennifer to do this, because I don't have time to dedicate to this.
So, I mean, should we pick our top five or six items, or even...
I think, I think we already have.
Well, we pick...
Well, we have ten, ten-ish top items, we could...
But, there's how many underneath those?
Of these, well, oh, you want items underneath.
Well, I mean, so we pick ten major categories, and under that, there might be another...
You know, you, I think we need to be conservative, honestly, because, look at the, we have sixteen items on here. Something comes up every week that we have to discuss, so it's, we've got to really focus on a few.
Right, right.
To get through them, yeah.
And what's the most important, so, that's, that's the question.
So, that's the other thing, and we put boxes, but we should actually put, okay, let's say we picked ten items, we should prioritize those, one, two, three, and then we should come up with that. Not just putting X's, but saying, this is my number one priority, this is my second. And then, see what filters to the top. And then, that's, I don't know, it, there's a lot to be done, and we all probably have a little different view on what we want to have done, in what order.
Well, okay, Ms. Bellinger.
Can we get, we did mention on seventy-five Barker, maybe getting the windows or maybe a paint job on it or whatnot? I don't know if we've come back with that information yet, maybe in the next meeting, maybe something in our packet will be good, if you've got anything.
I can answer quickly. The chief was arranging to get a few of the windows fixed, and as far as painting, we talked about that administratively, and we think the reason it peeled so much in the past was it was put on at the wrong time of the year. And so, if you paint now, it would do the same thing, so I think it needs to be a spring project.
It peeled off because it wasn't power washed, sir. You have to power wash them before you paint it, or it's all that dirt and sand on there. It was a bad job that we paid for. We told the treasurer not to pay the bill, she paid it, and it was just too bad.
An old treasurer, an old treasurer, not me.
Okay.
The old treasurer.
Thank you, thank you.
The board said, don't pay them.
Okay, what I do want to say about...
And then, we sued them, and then, they went out of business.
What I do want to say about seventy-five Barker, though, is that it is in the downtown area, and the DDA is very interested in participating in planning for the seventy-five Barker, and would like to make a proposal to the board at one of the upcoming meetings to kind of manage seventy-five Barker and make, and suggest some priorities for upgrades for that. So, they have, Mr. Seacrest and Barb Griffith and Somer, Jamil, are going to work on a proposal to bring to the board on seventy-five Barker. The only thing that I would recommend on that is to make sure that the DDA is, can do that. That is what I would like. If you guys bring that proposal to us, make sure that you can do that.
Okay.
As a DDA. Okay, just make sure that you cover that in the proposal.
I just want to come in, I thought this was a pretty good outline, a pretty good spreadsheet, now that I got a little time to, to, you know.
Okay, so, we can send out another email, please respond with whatever high priorities.
So, I mean, how do we want to do it? I mean, what is...
We're going to have to rank it again.
What is going to be the assignment? I mean, do we want to...
Top five.
Top five by category?
By milestone?
Or by milestone?
Wow.
Okay.
By milestone?
Top five by milestone.
Okay. Awesome.
Now, are these just what we personally like, or just what we think really needs to be done? I mean, is this something that we're going to gravitate towards, oh, you know, I kind of can do that, you know, maybe I'll help over here? Or is this things that overall, that regardless of who we have do the work that we think is a priority?
Things that the township needs done.
Regardless of whether I think I could do it or not, just things I think could be done? That's my question, is it something that we're supposed to like, oh, these are things that I could maybe be a part of helping with? Or is this things that, that the townships, we have, have to be done, they're bigger than what we can maybe do?
Go do it!
I would say if you think you can do it, add that on to it.
Yeah.
Take it off Ms. Ains', please.
Yeah, we'll get that power washer out there for you, Tom, and you can do the painting. Wayne will write you one. And also, if, if you think that somebody else other than Mr. Ains' can do this, then by all means, make a comment on it. I, I would honestly like to help with some of the planning stuff, you know, or the building stuff or whatever. This was just a draft, guys. Anyway.
So...
It was a good draft.
It, it was, and it was a great discussion, if I may, Madam. So, my, my thought is, like, anything that go into the planning commission, that it, you know, we should direct them to do it, and the same with the DDA.
Yep.
So, I certainly won't be...
You can paint all of these, well, so, the planning commission, we have a book at them.
Right, so, some of it, yes, some of it, not all of it.
Yeah.
But, I, so, I mean, in my, I'm not going to prioritize that, because I figure we'll direct them to do that. That's just my personal comment.
So, Janet, could you pull out, like, what, you feel the planning commission should take over?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, well, we'll try to get some really clear direction for this before you, you know, when you get an email. Okay, thank you very much for that. The next item is treasurer recommendation to transition to Huntington Bank.
Yes, so I don't know if you want me to make a motion first and then have a discussion?
Of course.
And I'll make a motion, I'll move that we change the township's bank to Huntington Bank, subject to the review of the legal documents by our lawyer.
I'll support.
Okay, we have a support by Zelnoc and a, I mean, a motion by Zelnoc and support by Chick.
Sophie, if you want to have some discussion, I can give a little background. There wa- there was a memo in there, and, again, our safekeeping is our most foremost objective. So, I have been contacting different banks, as well as talking to various professionals throughout, probably since I've been in office. And based on that information, I am recommending Huntington. It's a local, it does local government, it's well-funded, it's a good regional bank. Also, probably the tilting point was the fact the county has just moved to them last year with an RFP process. So, I mean, there has been, over the last, our current bank has had some financial challenges in the past. They are a very small bank, we are one percent of our, their assets. We are, we do have a security agreement with them, because they are a small bank. The lawyer has reviewed that and had some questions and concerns on that, and it has been difficult to get in contact with them, to get their lawyers to talk to our lawyers. So, that has prompted, or prompted the reviewing of the banking. Again, I had initially done it when I came in office, we had the security agreement, and then, it kind of came up again, so that's the reason for the recommendation. And we have talked to Chase, we've talked to Flagstar, we reached out to PNC, it was a little hard to get in contact with them, and then, so that's the, that's my comments or my discussion.
Okay.
Would you like me to ask, answer your question?
I would like to ask, yeah, how much interest are we going to get?
So, it's going to be kind of a tiering structure, is that on the MIF account, we'll get about point three basis points, and then, on the tax as well, but we can't use the tax, because you have to, any, any money that you get, you have to give it back to the entities, and it's just a lot of headwork, head, a lot of work. For the other accounts, it's going to be point one percent.
Point what?
Point one. So, a lot of banks don't get you anything. Right now, on the MIF account, we're getting a point five with our basis points.
Yeah, I'm getting a point two.
We're going to get a point three.
Any more, oh, Ms. Otto. So, two questions, what branch and how much fees are we saving by going to Huntington?
The branch will be most likely the one on Grand River and Whitmore Lake Road.
Point oh-two, I'm sorry, I lied.
In Brighton, yes.
Okay.
Point oh-two.
Yeah, yeah.
So...
Where's the branch again? I'm sorry, didn't hear.
It will be, there's two branches that are fairly close, within equal distance, one in South Lyon and one on Great, on Grand River and Whitmore Lake Road, right around that, by the Krogers. So, that's the one we'll probably end up going, in Brighton. That'll be our branch. To answer that, is that currently, we, we are not charged fees in our current bank, which is typical of a small bank. However, they do not provide a lot of the services, such as ACH debt protection, which we will be moving to. So, we think with the services and the fees offsetting, that there will be some interest, as indicated, between like twelve hundred, depends on our balances, to eighteen hundred. Right now, they're projecting two thousand in total interest, but I'm not thinking that we'll get that, because we, again, we're going to try to continue to diversify our bank account, so there should be some interest after fees.
How does this affect who's transporting cash to the bank, or does this? Has that been considered in all the distance?
Yeah, certainly, I mean, we do take cash to our bank. If we take a large amount of money, even to our current bank, we are, we have the police take us. And that's very rare.
Will the point oh-two pay for the hours and the gas money?
It should pay for it.
The mileage to drive from here to Brighton and back?
Yep.
Do you go every day or twice a day?
We, no, we don't go twice a day, we usually go three times a week.
Okay.
Can we talk Huntington Bank into opening up a branch in Whitmore Lake?
It would be awesome if they would, but, I'm, but, so.
All right, so is that, all right, we have a motion by Ms. Zelnoc and support by Ms. Chick. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Well, I'd like to say, I'm not going to support it, because I don't think we'll get enough money to pay the people to go to the bank and pay their mileage. It probably costs us twenty bucks or more, maybe, maybe thirty bucks. Do you know what it costs to go to the bank?
It's about, right now, it's about fifty dollars every two weeks to go to the bank, as well as to the post office, for the treasurer.
For time and mileage or just...
That's just the mileage.
Just the mileage, yeah.
Correct.
I have one more question.
Might be two hundred.
I'm thinking that, but go ahead.
We have another question by Ms. Otto. Since they did, the county did an RFP and Huntington won that, was there any negotiated fees out of that, that we could capitalize on?
I have been working very hard in doing that.
Okay.
And I brought that up to them, and initially, they weren't going to give us point three basis points, they were going to give us point two, we got point three, they weren't going to give us on any of the other accounts, now they're giving us point one. I know it's not a lot, but...
But, it is.
It's something.
Yeah.
And, I mean, we could always forego some of the services they provide, but, kind of like car insurance, they make you sign the waiver, and I was talking to Mr. Ains' about it, you know, if something were to happen and you tried to save three hundred dollars, maybe that wouldn't be the most prudent decision to make.
Okay. So, are you ready to vote now?
You mentioned that there was actually some concerns with the stability of the other bank, which is part of what prompted?
There is, I mean, that has, in my, talking with some of our professionals in the office, there was some concern with the financial condition at one point in time with the bank, that there was, and they were under consent judgment by the government as well, so.
Okay. All right, roll call vote, please.
Dockett.
No.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Otto.
Yes.
Chick.
Yes.
Manley, yes.
Zelenok?
Yes.
Choclee.
Yes. Okay, that passes, thank you. The next item is a resolution.
Yes, so the resolution is now to update, I'd make a motion to update our, the township's investment and depository designation to include Huntington.
Investment what?
The township investment and depository designation to include Huntington, resolution number seventeen dash five seven six.
Are you making the, I'll support. Okay, so, motion by Zelnoc and support by Otto. Any more discussion on this?
Why is there so many, um, um, depositories listed? We seem to have quite a few, is there a reason for so many, or are we going to be getting rid of, dropping a few, or what is?
Eventually, First National will go away. I'm still considering putting CDs in Old National Bank and Ann Arbor State Bank. Michigan Class is out there, if we want to do some, um, investment, like, as we determine our cash flow, then we could do some investment in that as well.
Does it cost us a bit of money to have these many different, different accounts?
Nope.
Okay.
No, it does not.
All right, okay.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call vote, please.
Chick.
Yes.
Zelenak.
Yes.
Bellinger.
Yes.
Docket.
No.
Otto.
Yes.
Chocly.
Yes.
Manley, yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, I have to sign that, too. The next item is.
Was that number nine?
That was number nine.
Yes.
Okay. And then the next one is to consider acceptance of a foreclosed parcel, so the, um, while you all have the memo, I don't need to redo this one. So I would like to move to accept the quitclaim deed of parcel B0217232015.
And how much are we paying on that?
Pardon?
Are we paying the $1,300?
We don't have to pay anything.
Okay.
We'll have to pay the taxes, right?
There's probably a minimal tax bill.
Right, right.
Possibly a minimal tax bill, but other than that.
Like $79 usually at a, usually, something along this, I didn't look it up.
We're thinking, though, that it may be, um, eliminated, but.
Right.
Yeah.
But usually, we do.
So anyway, and you see where the location of it is, it's a wetland area, Mr. Ains has been by, would you like to describe it? He went tromping through it, no.
Yes, this piece of property is at the end of Maple Grove Drive, and that's in the Horseshoe Lake, uh, development. And, um, it's part of a much larger area that's, uh, all cattails. So it is very swampy, but it has a potential that we could use it in the future.
It'll help Horseshoe Lake not flood so much, maybe. So anyway, the motion has been made, any more comments?
I'll second.
Did someone second?
Mr. Docket has a.
Did anybody second your motion?
I don't know, you can second it.
I'll second.
I'll take Zelnak.
This time.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Docket, you have a question?
Uh, no, I have a comment, though. It's, uh, 250 feet by 100 feet. It's on the end of a dead end street, I'm reading the second paragraph on the page two, and I really like it. No monetary consideration, we're not paying, we're not paying anything for it. The general property taxes are, are going to be, like, expunged, so that costs us nothing. And, uh, as of, uh, December 31st, 2017, anyone who's got any claim on the property in any way, is going to be null and void, which I'm happy about. Uh, so it looks like a perfect situation for us, and I have already gone to our township manager and told him the first thing after we buy this, that I want him to go to Evans Sign Company and get about 60, 70,000 dollars a year to put a sign up there, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, right, okay, roll call vote, please.
Manley, yes. Chocly?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Docket?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Thank you, that passes, okay. Um, next item, um, received the attorney response regarding Mr. Docket's pay, and that's in your packet. I don't know if this is pertinent at this point, but, go ahead, Mr., um.
Just as a practical matter, if the board wants to discuss our attorney client, client privilege communication in open session, you should formally have a vote to waive the privilege.
Well, I don't even have it, so, it's not in the packet. Oh, you have your, what happened to mine? Okay.
We, we emailed it to the, yeah, we emailed it to the board a couple days ago.
I must have misplaced it in my packet, I've read it.
I read it.
I have an extra copy.
Okay. Okay, um, so, um, I'll make a motion to waive attorney-client privilege communication.
I'll second.
Okay, motion by Chocly, support by Zelnak, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
I, I don't want to.
You don't want to talk about it?
No, I don't want to vote abstaining.
Oh, okay, that's fine, okay.
What abstained?
Oh, Mark, you abstained. All right, um.
I, I don't really have anything to add beyond the content of our letter, I'm happy to answer any questions the board may have. Certainly, the, the letter is the sum substance of our opinion in this matter.
And we have a check sitting down there that needs a signature, but, anyway, go ahead, Mr. Ains.
Based on the opinion, I had talked to the deputy clerk about payroll. Uh, normal payroll will be coming out on Friday, so in order to try to accommodate this tonight, I had a special check drawn up, that the deputy clerk figured out the, uh, the amount of deductions for taxes and all those kind of things, so this is the net amount. And it's my understanding that for these kind of checks, that they have to be signed by one representative of the clerk's office and one of the treasurer's office. So I did not instruct anybody to do anything, I just asked them to please consider it, and, uh, the treasurer's office did sign it, and the deputy clerk did give me the information. And I can instruct my, uh, direct administrative assistant to draw the check, checks up. So I tried to abide by the board's directions to avoid getting involved in statutory duties of the clerk, supervisor, treasurer. But at the same time, I have a responsibility to, um, to make this available if the board chooses to, uh, to have it approved.
So.
Do we need to make a motion to, what, approve, uh, the pay at this point, or what is the, what would the motion be? Just approve the, uh?
To release the check.
Release the check, I guess.
Well, I make a motion to release the check for Mr. Docket's yearly pay.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger.
I would amend that to say early release.
Early release.
You would amend it what?
Say, early, is that?
To early release, because normally, we did it by December 1st.
Thank you.
But, did he get paid prior to his vacations typically? When he left before or after Thanksgiving or something?
No.
Well, we can amend it to say early, early release, if that's what it is, yeah.
Well, go ahead and restate your motion with early.
Make a motion to, uh, to approve an early release of Mr. Docket's paycheck.
I'll support.
Okay, a motion by Ms. Bellinger, support by Ms. Otto, um, do we need a roll call vote on this?
Discussion.
Discussion, yes, go ahead.
I guess I'd like to ask the question of why we would choose to do this. We've been, he hasn't been paid early the last two years at least. Our attorney is advising against it, and I'm just wondering why we would make an exception and set a precedent.
Well, the only other thing is, is be from November 20th of when he was, when we started office, until today is the year.
It's still cutting a paycheck early. Paychecks go out December 1st, payroll has already been sent, he's already been told it was December 1st, why are we making an exception to pay him early?
I think the attorney, you were talking about paying him prior to the year being over with. That's what you were talking about, early.
We, we were talking about paying for hours that Mr. Docket has worked.
Right. Yeah, so he's already worked his year.
Okay, then why are we making an exception to cut him a paycheck early, when we wouldn't do that for anybody else? So if somebody else comes to us and asks for this, is this setting a precedent?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, that's my concern is.
So, why do we want to do this, is my big question. I have nothing against Mr. Docket, it's this, like I said, I, I spend too much on Cyber Monday, can I get my paycheck tonight? I mean, it's just.
Well, one of the issues that I've had with this is that we've had three board meetings addressing this. We probably have spent the taxpayers' dollars, uh, more than probably what we're paying Mr. Docket. Uh, in trying to get this resolved, so it's, sometimes you just have to resolve it and move on.
So my, my comment is, is what are we going to do? Okay, I, I believe if I read the letter, you're recommending that we do pay him.
That, that's correct. I mean, as, as a practical matter.
I, I can't hear you, sir.
I apologize, Mr. Docket. As a practical matter, we're, we're not aware of anything binding the township to pay at a certain, on a certain payroll date. I mean, the, the board certainly has the ability to evaluate this on a case-by-case basis. And while Mr. Docket may have a valid basis here, because he's going to be going out of town for two months, if somebody just says, hey, I know I get paid every two weeks, but I'd like to get paid this week, the board could certainly evaluate that and say that, that's a different set of circumstances. I, I don't think that because you vote to pay Mr. Docket today, that means that you have to pay everybody early who asks for it from now until the end of time. I think that it's a case-by-case inquiry that the board can certainly look into and see if it deems it appropriate.
Thank you, and then my next comment is, is how do we alleviate this from happening next year?
Right, because if all of us decide we want to get paid on November 28th, then, then do we all get a check next year?
Well, we make a motion after this is over with.
I mean, so, I just wanted to, you know, come up with a resolution, so, as Ms. Otto said, we're not discussing it at three, four, five, six, seven board meetings.
One of the problems with this is that it's paying for a whole year, but it is spanning now two fiscal years. So it would be, really, trustees are paid quarterly, and that would, and at least it wouldn't be spanning two fiscal years, and.
Perhaps this should be done at the end of a fiscal year, maybe from now on.
That might be helpful.
Maybe we could work with Mr. Docket to see if that would be.
Well, why don't we just pay him quarterly, like everybody else gets quarterly? I mean, all the other trustees get quarterly.
That was going to be one of my recommendations after we vote on this thing.
Yes, right, I mean, we, we haven't paid him quarterly, because he wants a physical check, it costs us 20.
Well, but it's cost us so darn much money to deal with this.
Well, I don't know if it really has, we have to sit in the meetings and discuss it.
Yes, so.
We've had legal opinions on it, obviously.
Get it over with.
So.
We're just giving, I mean, to me, I explained it, like, to my kids, like, you're, you're going to argue and you're going to fight, and you're going to get it till you get what you want, and we're just going to give in to end it, so.
Will you speak into the mic, please?
I said, basically, we're giving in to the demands, because we've heard about it so much, we're just giving in and doing it, instead of waiting till the first, like everybody else.
Okay.
My opinion.
But I don't want it to happen again next year. Okay.
I don't think anybody does.
Okay, um, roll call vote, please.
Chick?
Yes.
Otto?
Yes.
Manley, no. Chocly?
Yes.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Docket?
Abstaining. Oh, he's abstaining.
Um, Bellinger?
Yes.
Okay. That passes. Okay, so, so, I would like to make a motion that, um, all the trustees be paid, uh, quarterly, um, as is custom, and, so that we don't have this problem in the future.
How are they going to be paid? Direct deposit, pay card, check?
Well, that's.
Whatever everybody personally wants. Do you want to leave this for next time?
Yes, but you don't want to deal with the being paid quarterly? And there's going to be another quarter coming up.
Pay quarterly, you're paying for the fiscal year or the annual year?
Um, it's, well, this is pretty much the same thing, I mean, we're done.
Just like, there it is, you know? Right, that's what they're saying, everybody should.
Right. Okay, well.
Ask Mr. Docket, because he's the one that.
Do it, Mr. Docket, why make any difference?
No. Is.
It's a board decision, I don't.
Well, then, it, it's on a quarterly, I would recommend paying on a quarterly basis, and I would also recommend, if he wants it as a check, you give it to him as a check.
I have no issue with that.
Yeah, yep, gets it over with. All right, I make a mo, well, you, you just made the motion, you made a recommendation.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we pay Mr. Docket on a quarterly basis, along with the other trustees at the same time, and he, and we pay him in the, uh, in the means of a check.
I support. If you.
Is that okay with that?
Okay, so we have a motion, motion by Otto and support by Bellinger. Okay, um, roll call on this?
So that will be an extra cost to the township to physically cut him the check, which is around $22.
Every quarter.
Every quarter.
Yep.
And we will get charged for that also on Friday.
You can take it out of my pay.
Is that part of the motion?
I'll tell you guys, I am, I'm tired of hearing about it.
Yep. All right, so that's the motion.
We do write checks, don't we?
Not from payroll, not from payroll.
Direct deposit.
They're different checks, we do not write checks from payroll.
We use a payroll company, and they charge us, that's why.
So, so we don't write, what kind of checks do we write from the office, I was curious?
Pay our vendors and.
Pay vendors and whatnot, we don't do payroll checks, I'll have to do vendors, though, and maybe, maybe, um, contracts and so forth?
So, if I may, so the checks that we write are, if we write it to a contractor, so we're not deducting, we're not taking out the taxes. You know, they give us a bill, we pay them. So with this check, we, we had to take out and consider the taxes to withdraw it, and then we'll have to pay those.
Okay.
So that, that's the difference. Payroll company takes all, takes care of all the taxes and all that logistics, and we just, our vendors and everybody, we just pay their invoice, and they handle all the taxes on the other side.
Thanks.
Okay, so we have a motion by Otto and support by Bellinger for quarterly payment by check for Mr. Docket, at the same time as all the other trustees. Let's have a roll call vote, please.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Docket?
Oh, he's abstaining.
Zelenak?
Yes.
Chocly?
Yes.
Manley, yes. Otto?
Yes.
Chick?
Yes.
Okay, that passes, thank you.
I'd like to thank the board very much.
All right.
You're welcome.
Next item is, da-da-da, um, the Washtenaw County Community Mental Health and Public Safety Preservation Village.
Yeah.
This was your item.
Got a lot of information, yeah, okay, cool. Got a lot of stuff, I, um, I included in the package, you can see the proposal, that the Board of Commissioners came up with, the actual ballot language, and, uh, even a couple of the resolutions that, um, Ann Arbor went ahead and moved forward with, what they plan to do with their quote-unquote refund. So what I'd like to, what I'm asking the board, what our board to do is, um, I'm looking for them to agree to return the refund portion to the taxpayers. And I do have a, um, a motion written out here that I think might be, uh, that, that might be adequate. I could give everybody a copy if you like, or I could just read it. Let me know what you think, I think it kind of covers the bases without, uh, without, you know, being binding in a sense and all that. I brought an extra copy for Lisa, but she's not here.
Well, why don't you go ahead and make your motion, so we can discuss it?
Okay, um, I move that we return the refund received from the Washtenaw County Prop 1 Village, also known as the 24%, that shall be allocated to jurisdictions in the county, which maintain their own police force, to the taxpayers of Northfield Township through legal, expedient, and efficient means.
Support.
So there is no, like, do it exactly like the. So, there is no like, do it exactly like this, but legal, expedient, and efficient means to try to cover the bases of not being, it doesn't seem realistic like Ed mentioned to send everybody a check. That doesn't make any sense. Make sure it's legal because we don't want to do it if it's not and, you know, in a timely fashion when we receive or realize we're going to receive this refund.
So, we have a motion by Ms. Bellinger and support by Mr. Docket. Now, we have an opportunity for discussion. Ms. Chick?
I'm not comfortable voting on a motion that we don't know is legal and we don't know the cost of actually distributing the funds, so I'd rather have that information first.
Ms. Otto?
I'm in agreement with Ms. Chick. I think the same thing that we, we need to know the cost of refunding needs to be returned, determined the amount of the revenue from the tax. I mean, we need to know what the total amount from the tax is. I would like to see, and I know, just a feasibility analysis, how much is going to cost us to return this money? We did the same thing when we had to return the money-
For Horseshoe Lake.
For Horseshoe Lake, and there was a cost to it.
And it took forever.
And it's, yeah, you're right, it's still haunting us.
Now, what if this is done-
And we were able to take some of that cost out of that. I don't know how we got the cost out of it, but we got some of the cost recovered from it. But it does cost to do it and it's an administrative cost in order to do this. It's just not, somebody downstairs returning checks, you have to have an audit, you have to make sure that there's a paper trail and everything. So, it's not an easy task.
It can't be distributed evenly, it has to be based on the tax, on the property. So, we have to investigate that, right?
You have to have-
Logistically, it's, could be a nightmare.
Did you want to comment, Ms. Manley?
Yeah, basically, I mean, I think it's kind of early to be deciding this. I mean, I think you've already said it might be challenged in court. So, you know, we could be doing this for nothing and then, like I said, I think logistically, and I mean, you can ask Lenora, I mean, refunding people's taxes is just going to be a nightmare. And then what if I pay my taxes late?
What if it was a reduction?
What if you don't pay them, or?
I think Madam Supervisor had a good idea.
Well, you know, I do have a comment on this and I'm not ready to do this tonight either, though, because I don't know what kind of strings are attached to this, how it would impact the police department or, you know, so the, Ann Arbor wanted to do solar panels and everything else with their money. I'm not sure how it will affect us. It won't be levied until December of 2018, so that's more than a year from now. And we won't receive it until probably 2019, so that's even, that's well more than a year from now. And we, so we don't know exactly how much. However, the other part of it is, we could reduce our millage rate and there's ramifications associated with that, too. We could reduce our millage rate for, depending on which, which fund it goes into and I don't know if we have to put it in the general or if we have to put it in the police, we could reduce our millage rate by the amount that's equal to that amount of money. So, for the period of time that this happens. So, there's unknowns, specific unknowns, and the fact that it's well over a year from now before we receive any of this money, I would definitely not want to do or commit to that at this point. I do realize, though, that the people of Northfield Township did not vote for this millage and so there's something to be, there's a lot to be said for that. So, I would like to reconsider this at an appropriate time in the future, one, there's actually money to be worried about because it's not coming in for quite so long.
The Northfield Township did vote for it, but we didn't support it.
We, we did vote, but we did not support it, yes.
Yeah, but just, I'd like to ask for this board to agree to, if and when we get this money and if it's legal, that we can return it to the taxpayers. And I like the way that you suggested by reducing the millage perhaps at the police department.
Yeah, I would recommend even when we know of what the amount is and then start having the discussions at that time.
It's approximately 150, I guess, 150,000.
Yeah, so, if I may, Madam-
Go ahead, Ms. Selma.
I mean, I don't even, I think we need to wait till we get a legal opinion if we can even return it.
Right.
I mean, you read the millage, it was very complex, but is that money not tied to doing something mental health?
Well, that's why I included the millage in here because it specifically isn't.
Yeah, it's just, I don't know, when I read it, I didn't come away with that. I'll let our great attorneys actually look into it to see if we can-
Dot the i's, cross the t's.
See if we can legally and then we can pursue it if we can and then what amount. And I agree, I mean, from a tax perspective, taxes work that the government entities tell us what to collect. And so, if it's supposed to go in the police department and it was 150,000, you'd have to figure it out and you'd have to lower, to me, you'd have to lower that millage, that millage rate by that or if it's supposed to go in the general fund, you'd have to lower that.
Or if we could even, or if we could even lower the millage fund-
Right.
For the police.
Sure.
Because I think some you can't touch.
Yeah, sometimes you can't, but sometimes it's an up to, but-
That's exactly right, Madam Treasurer. I think generally speaking, if it's authorized as a flat millage, then-
You cannot.
That's correct.
But if it was an up to, then you could reduce it and take into headly as well. So, it becomes a little more complex.
And the amount's going to vary every year, though, too.
Yep, so every year, we, you know, you'd have to look at what amount we'd get back and then you'd have to look at that and you'd have to adjust the millage accordingly.
I think we should talk to the taxpayers, too, and say, okay, so if the township gets this additional 150,000 dollars, if we kept that money, what would you like us to do with it?
That's exactly what I don't, that's exactly what I don't want to have happen. I want to protect the taxpayers' money.
My part of it is going to be about 70 dollars. The township wants that money and can spend it wisely.
No, that's exactly, that's, that's exactly what Ann Arbor's doing, they're using it as a slush fund and that was, that was the way to buy the different townships.
They're building sidewalks, they're building solar panels, that's what Ann Arbor wants. If that's what they want, right, if that's what the community wants.
But the proper thing to do, the ethical thing to do is return this to the taxpayers. That's what, that's what's ethical to do with it, which is why I'm bringing this to the board.
I mean, we could, so, if I may, another, I mean, I know unfortunately, people didn't vote.
Yes. That's the way it works.
Yeah, and, well, I mean, I know, so, we're saying, but because the vote was 63% against, I mean, I know people-
People that said yes, can we keep their money?
Yeah, so, I mean, well, I mean, I know people didn't vote, some people said, well, whatever Ann Arbor's going to do on it, it's going to be it, so I'm not going out to vote, so. Bad philosophy, I get it, but you wonder, and if we really truly want to give it back, why don't we put it on the ballot and say, this is how much money we'd give you back? Well, I don't know if it would if we are running other elections. Because the gubernatorial elections are coming up, so we will be running them and I-
There'll be three elections.
So, that, usually when that happens, they're for- Exactly, you'd have to say, you'd have to say approximately that. I mean, it's just a thought.
It can be approximately, it can be-
Well, it's going to vary year to year.
Let's rein this in a little here.
So, I mean, it's, it's a thought that you can just say, let's do it that way as well.
Yeah, the most effective thing I've heard so far is, as Madam Supervisor suggested, that perhaps addressing, reducing, yeah, of course, if it's legal, find a way to reduce the police department millage. That way, you ease the burden on the taxpayers from this one mill and go from there. That's, that makes the most sense because obviously, like, like, like Manley said, it's just not effective, the right checks, that's just a waste. That's why efficient and expedient and legal is what I added in here. Because it's just not efficient at all.
There's another ramification, though, of this, too, that some of the funds we get from the state are allocated to the, to our departments based on the millage rate. So, one of the state funds that comes in, and it's not a lot, okay, it's 45,000 dollars at this time, or 46,000 dollars, and it's allocated to the general fund, the fire and the police based on their millage rates. So, if we were to reduce the millage rate of the fire, then it would, you know, they would get less of that money, you know, the other two funds would get more. So, there's, there's ramifications that we would want to deal with at the time that we would know a little more specifically what that impact would be. So, that's, that's why I'll be voting no on this at this time and I'm, I'm certain that Ms. Bellinger will bring this back up at an appropriate time in the future when we actually have some money we can deal with.
Okay, so, anyway. Well, she has a motion on the, on the floor, so.
Yeah.
Okay, so, do you, roll call vote?
Manley, no. Otto?
No.
Chocly?
No.
Chick? Zelenak?
No.
Docket?
Yes.
Bellinger?
Yes.
Okay, that, that failed. Okay, thank you for bringing that up, though.
This doesn't mean it can't be brought up again.
It can be brought up again in the future. Oh, and we have Mr. Mainz.
Just for clarification, is there anything that the board wants for our office to look into on this matter at this time or to, for us to just hold off until it's raised again at the board level?
I would wait till it's ra-, I mean, does anybody else want him to spend time doing that?
Actually, I thought, yes, I actually do. I would like him or their office to spend time to see if we could legally give it back.
So, would the question being-
Yes, correct.
So, would the question being whether we can directly refund it?
Correct.
Oh, directly or reduce our millage rate?
Well, either or.
We can reduce our millage rate.
That's what I want to make sure I know, what the actual question is.
I don't want it directly, I want to, if we can, based on the language of this millage, if the township can reduce another millage within the township, and which one would it be to give the money allocated back to, that's what I'm looking for.
So, ultimately on that question, the question would be what the millage language is on the other millages that you're going to be reducing, so.
I already asked Tom Monchek this and we had it all out and it's, and it's limitations, yeah, the limitation. So, it's, it's up to the, and so we, it's not a set amount, so we can go ahead and let it last. I asked him that.
So, I guess based on the millage that we voted on for the Washtenaw County, can the township legally, when I say give back, redistribute it through reducing millages?
Which millages?
It would be police or general fund.
We'd have to pick it and it would depend on where that money went into.
But in particular, can we give the money back based on the actual Washtenaw County millage? That's the first question. And then I think, yeah, we could probably figure out in the office, but which one does it say? Is it really to go to the police or is it to go to the general fund when we get the money? I don't know. I mean, I really couldn't tell based on that millage.
It just says it's-
Yeah.
See, the problem is it's allocated to jurisdictions, it doesn't say it needs to be applied to this. The first half of the millage says it goes to this specifically and it goes to that specifically, but that's why Ann Arbor is having a fun with the, fun with the money with the slush fund and all that. By design, to buy the votes.
So, do we need a, a vote for Mr. Mainz to work on that? Are you good with that?
It's all right.
If it seems to be general acclaim, I'm-
It's not, it's part of your retainer, isn't it?
It is. I, I just don't want to come back later and have five board members say, why did you waste all your time on that? Great, I'll look forward to that.
Okay, so he's going to do it, right? Okay. All right, next item is second call to the public. You brave souls who have stayed here all night.
Wake up out there.
Please state your name, your address, and speak into the microphone, make sure it's turned on.
David Gibbons, I live at 8985 Garfield Drive. First off, I would like to apologize to Ms. Bellinger. There were some, several comments made on Facebook recently and in one of them, I personally attacked you. I apologize for that, I should not have done that, that was the wrong thing to do.
Thank you for the apology.
Second off, I would like to apologize to the young lady that needed help with a friend that has cancer that needs it. You are, part of the problem is, is you are left to investigate a lot of it yourself, but there are a few places that can help you work on that kind of thing. Second off, you guys asked about the control. Do you have control over who gets a bar license, who gets a liquor license? And do you have control over what's in that liquor or what's in that beer? You're asking for those kind of controls over marijuana when you don't have control over those type of things also. Secondly, part of the problem that is, is the federal government. The federal government will not even allow you to investigate what marijuana can do because they classify it as a Schedule I drug. Twenty-nine states, more than 50%, have legalized marijuana for medical use. There's like 12 states that have legalized recreational. Sooner or later, the Fed's going to have to change, then you will be able to have more testing. There is quality testing now on product available in Michigan. They test to tell you how much the THC concentration is, they tech to see how much the CBD and the CBC are. Both of those are related more to pain and cancer, but there are grades of marijuana that has very little to none THC in it, but has extreme amounts of the other two because they're beneficial. You have to do a little bit of investigation, but they are available. The amount of money that you bring in, I grant it, right now, it's only 25% of 3%. That may start off small, you may only get a couple of hundred dollars the first month, but the medical marijuana, the marijuana industry itself is going to be billions of dollars in just a couple of years. So, if you got 3% of a billion dollars and 25% of that, then you start to add up some money. So, I think that is something you should keep an eye open on. I'm not asking for a dispensary tomorrow, I'm asking for the ability to have one. That's all I'm asking for, keep the options open. I recommend the one lady offered a free consultation from a lawyer company. There is a company out there that actually helped write the laws for Michigan and they will come in and talk to you. Nothing against the well-firm that you have, but if they didn't help draft the laws, then it's open to interpretation. That's all a law is, is interpretation of what somebody else wrote down. So, maybe hearing it from the people that helped drafted those laws would be beneficial for you. And they will come in and do consultations for free. So, it's not a scam where we know a little bit about marijuana and for a hundred dollars, we'll do more. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
There are new laws going into effect and part of the problem with some of these new laws is the state can't decide who's in charge. Right now, there's plans on closing a lot of dispensaries for relicensing next year, but there's an argument between the Attorney General and Laura and who's in charge. The Attorney General makes a comment, but Laura's stomping its feet saying, we are in charge of licensing and the Attorney General cannot make the law. So, they're still up in the air in the state government of who's going to do all this regulation. So, if you have, to me, the opportunity, you should at least opt in. Maybe later you can opt out, but if the law changes, which it's going to change as of January 1st, you may not be able to opt in later. So, you need to look at those kind of things.
Fifteen seconds, Mr. Gibbons.
Let's see, the clean air rules. There are, people complain about the smells. You can actually regulate clean air in the township. There are filtering systems that will remove the odor from marijuana plants drying and growing completely. I know people that have them. So, that is necessarily a problem. You guys have a way to legislate a lot of different things that I agree would affect all businesses. The Clean Air Act would affect all businesses. I think it would be a great thing. How many places do we have that's dumping pollutants in the air right now that are dangerous to us? Not just something that somebody dislikes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gibbons.
I need a couple more things. Most of Michigan law is based off what Colorado has done with recreational laws. Colorado hasn't got it figured out completely yet. They are still changing their laws. I was just out there a couple of months ago. A lot of their laws are dealing with labeling. That's a lot of the problems now is the state is not exact on labeling. So, one dispenser will say, well, this is the type it is and don't take it while you drive, but other than that, that's it. And the other one will tell you the THC content, it gives you a small breakdown, but the state doesn't require one or the other. So, there's still a lot of states out that needs to be figured out. And lastly, I would like to make a comment about people being employees of the township. I worked elections, I worked elections for five or six years. I was always a subcontractor before. Now, you guys have made me an employee, which means you have to take taxes out for me. You have to pay matching taxes for that. And I don't even make 600 dollars a year. You have four people that work each- You have four people that work each precinct, that's 12 people. You have three to four elections each year, none of those people even make a thousand dollars out of that year.
It's a federal...
I don't understand the idea of that, because honestly now, because you've paid for my training, I can go to any other district, any other township and work, and they will pay me a straight fee and not take taxes out. So, you guys are losing, you're paying for the training, and then you're going to lose people to work your elections. Thank you very much. I apologize for going over.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a federal law that we had to switch, right, Mr. Ains? Oh, you would know. Kathy, you would know.
I wasn't here.
No, okay. It is a federal law, they used to, it used to be independent contractors, and now, we had to switch them all to being employees and take taxes out. That's my understanding.
I think, I think the township does do the...
You should double check that.
No, it wasn't willing to, it was... I think it's a bunch of baloney.
Because we had to.
I don't believe that.
Yeah, this is called the public, another opportunity for someone to speak. Yes, it is called the public. Does anyone else like to speak at this time? We're all getting tired, so, I'm sorry.
David Gordon, 5558 Helena Road. Is it still Tuesday?
No.
Thirteen items on the agenda, 246 pages, three and a half hours. Please, Madam Supervisor, do something about this, will you? I would, you know, create some subcommittees that can make recommendations to the Board, who can then say yes or no. Does everything have to be a long, drawn-out conversation, and then, nothing gets done? Well, it's not ready yet, we'll have to bring it back later. It's really unprofessional, and it's been a year. There's so many items here to talk about, I'm going to try to make my comments within three minutes. There was a lot of discussions about medical marijuana, except, almost everybody who spoke said, "I don't really have any statistics. I don't have all the facts, but here's my very strong opinion about this. I'm against this, or I'm in favor of it." I mean, couldn't you please pretend to get all the facts before you make up your mind? Number two, I think you should increase the fire millage so that they can pay for their fire trucks and not take the money out of the general fund. It's not right. The people in the rural areas are paying the majority of taxes in this community, and yet, you can even ask the chief, in terms of fire protection, the truck's going to get out there, and it's going to save our foundation. The fire department is much more effective in town, which will stop one house from catching fire from another, and they'll get there a lot faster. So, I personally resent taking money from my taxes out of the general fund to go for the fire department. I think they do a great job, I'm really keen on their medical rescue, but I think that you should ask the voters, are they willing to pay for their equipment for the fire department, instead of taking it out of the general fund? Number three, you got a soft release going on about the park, but there's people that I talked to in this township who don't even know that we're talking about doing a park. I don't know what this document is, I saw it on the table outside there, I don't know, is that being distributed somehow?
It'll be in your tax bill.
Okay, it'll be in the tax, oh, great. What I did notice about this is, all the discussion is about growth, development, and borrowing money for projects in Whitmore Lake. Where's the mention of land preservation? Where's the work on that? What's changed with this Board that's different than the previous Boards in terms of its focus? I don't see it, I'm disappointed. There were comments about how the community split on medical marijuana, that's absolutely true, it's split 65-35. You can look at Northfield area news, on Facebook, two out of three people are in favor of it. That's in this township, and that's the same as the vote in the state of Michigan, two out of three people are in favor of it, 60-plus percent, it's a supermajority. It's a legal business, it's a commercial business, that ought to be in commercial areas without all these other hoops that you want to go through. And lastly, this comment, this concept of trying to give money back from a millage that was passed by the county. It's a mental health millage. The reason it's related to police departments is because police departments have to do a lot of work with mentally ill people, they're called upon. I think it's outrageous that we should try to pretend that we're not part of the county, and the whole concept of paying taxes is some sort of bad thing. I don't like it, I think it's un-American. You don't want to pay taxes, find some other country that doesn't charge taxes and go live there. That's all I have, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good evening.
Adam Olney, 9315 Lakewood Court. Just a couple comments to the Board. You're talking about federal government, federal regulations, you're elected to this township Board, you're not elected to the federal government, so make decisions for this township, not for the federal government. Ms. Manley, you had mentioned something about taking the power away from the Board and letting the electors make a decision. Detroit, they elected to make changes to it. All of your power is from the people. You only have power because you were elected by the people, so you wanting to keep that power, if the people vote on something, you should be proud of that, you should let them vote on that. So, I think your fear of the people changing, you opting in for something, and then later, the people voting to change what you opted in for, well, that's the people's voice, that's what they want, that shouldn't be a fear. So, the whole returning taxpayers' money, that's, it was voted, like the previous gentleman said, it's a countywide vote. We voted for it. If you put that on the bill, that there was a possibility of it to be returned to individual townships, the turnout could have been completely different, you have no idea. So, if you would have told Northfield Township, if this passes in the Northfield Township area, the township's going to keep the money, if it doesn't pass, they're going to get a refund, who knows who would have showed up to vote? It was a very, it's a low turnout, all of our elections are low turnouts, and, you know, unless we connect a township Board with a presidential election, we get a decent turnout. So, giving it back to the people, the people spoke as a county, it was a county vote, it wasn't a township vote. So, you taking that power away from the county, that's not your job, that's not your responsibility. So, the people spoke, hear them, do what they wanted. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Jody, I live at 9132 Lincoln Drive. A couple of things I'd just like to touch base on, if we use the number that dispensaries are making, $100,000 per week in Ann Arbor, and we just moved that number here, assuming best-case scenario, they have a full customer base, that's $5.2 million a year, 3 percent tax on that is $156,000. 24 percent of that 3 percent is $37,440 in tax revenue for Northfield Township, Whitmore Lake, whatever you need to call it, $37,000. I know that doesn't seem like a lot of money, but that literally costs more than my entire house in Northfield Township. I can only imagine what the downtown area would look like with $37,000 worth of improvements. Maybe there'd be grass, or a flower, or like a painted storefront, maybe the benches would say Northfield Township again, or Whitmore Lake, or whatever. They would just look nice. Something was brought up, the signs, no dispensary coming into a small town is going to try to make waves, they're going to do whatever you want them to do, just ask nice, hey, can you just make this look appropriate? And they're going to do that, they're not trying to piss everybody off, they don't want the residents to hate them. In Brighton, when they wanted to add the sex toy shop, right there on Grand River, there was angry moms, just pick it in. That shop looks like anything else, they just have blank windows, it says their name, people know what's inside, that's it. They didn't want to make waves, they're not putting dildos on the door, like, they just want money, everybody just wants money. Speaking on the federal government, how it is illegal. Well, they say it's illegal, they say it has no medical prac, no medical anything, but they also have a patient, number 6630507, on cannabis and THC and CBDs. Why? If it has no medical uses, why would they, why would they own that? They must know something. It just makes more sense to leave it illegal right now, because the war on drugs brings in so much money to the entire country. Canada has completely legalized marijuana, and they're going to make all of the money. They're an hour away from us, the entire country is legalized now. I will be going to the Ann Arbor Police Department to talk to the police there directly, to find out their specific instances with the dispensaries in downtown Ann Arbor, because we don't actually know. Nobody has any information, I'll go find it, and I'll bring it to you. And then, about the refund, we have like 8,000 residents, $150,000, that works out to like 1875 a person, minus the money to actually get it back to each person, it seems negligible, just keep my $20.
Fifteen seconds, unless you're finished.
Done.
Okay, thank you much. Okay, anyone else like to speak? No? Okay. Board member comments? We'll start it.
Call Ellen.
Okay. Ms. Bellinger, do you have any comments tonight? Okay, go ahead.
Great meeting, thank you for coming out and taking part, and lots to say, but maybe we'll say that another time. Shop local if you can, enjoy life, and I'll talk to you soon.
Thanks. Mr. Dockett?
I would like to ask a question. Lucinda Lupai's rebate, have we billed Don Lupai to get this money back?
I don't know. Have we?
I'm not aware of that, I'll have to check.
Okay. Did we mail the check? Shouldn't that come out of the...
I said, I'm not aware whether it's been billed yet, Mr. Dockett, so I'll have to check.
Request for the refund, but isn't that either the clerk or the clerk's office to request it?
Have we spent the, I mean, did we, did we send the check to Lucinda?
We have sent the check.
Okay, well, we sent the check to her.
So, now, we need to start the second process of requesting the refund.
We should have started the next day, but thank you a lot for that.
Yep, we'll do it.
Buy and use local store, for stores and businesses, and I will not be here for the month of December, as I have not been here for the month of December for the last 20 years. However, I was paid the last two years in December. It goes back to the old saying, liars figure, but figures don't lie, so I don't know how I got paid for the last two years in December, when I have not been in the state of Michigan. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year.
I'd like to thank everybody for their comments tonight, it's good to hear what the people are thinking. That's what, as people said, that's, "We're here to serve you." So, it's good to hear and have people come out. We do have to work on the agenda, we cannot, we won't get people coming out when it's quarter to 11:00. We have to make it smaller, and as one person said, "We've been doing it for a year now, we got to get a lot better." Being the treasurer, your taxes will be coming out December 1st. I know, it's a lucky part of my job. Thanks.
Kathy?
Just one question, I guess, to Mr. Ains, what are we telling people now when they do come in asking about the marijuana?
I've been getting inquiries since I started here. I've taken a neutral position, because the Board had taken a neutral position. So, I was telling potential developers that the Board had not taken any action to approve allowing anyone in. Some of the people inquiring were doing surveys throughout the state. I did recommend they contact the Township Association, that they would probably have information across the whole state on townships, so they wouldn't have to contact every community. And I was told there were over 2,000 townships in the state, but unless the Board at some point instructs me otherwise, I'm just indicating that, you know, you haven't taken a position on it. As far as potential information, the Township Association has, people come in and educate local governments on it, and my understanding is the state does too, and so, there are, you know, a number of resources if you want us to look into that.
One more thing to address, Mr. Olney, and I guess my comment wasn't that, you know, I wouldn't go against the electors, it's more, as, you know, we could set our rules, and then they could change through an election. You know, again, going, you know, if the people vote that way, they could change what we initially set, is where I was going with that, so. That's it, thank you, everybody.
Ms. Otto?
Yeah, I do want to thank everybody for their comments, and thank you, David, for coming out, appreciate everyone's comments, for and against. I want to let everybody know that the Quanis, it does have their Christmas tree sales at 75 Barker, all proceeds go to the Fourth of July Parade, and we are 501(c)(3). Also, I do want to extend my condolences and sympathies to Andy Locatos and his family at this time.
What?
His wife passed away.
Oh, no. Okay, well, yeah. Oh, yeah, Ms. Chick?
I did, it's a conversation we had earlier, that's...
I was good today.
Yeah, okay, all right. Real quickly, with the Closing Approved Pharmacy, I know there was some questions people were asking about where they could go to have their prescriptions done, and there are some people that don't have transportation to actually go to a pharmacy to get their prescriptions, they can do mail order, but I did also talk to Kroger Pharmacy in South Lyon, I got a phone call back today from the pharmacy, and they said they will deliver out to Northfield Township if people want to utilize them in South Lyon, or you can try Kroger and Hamburg as well. Also, in regards to communication, I also got some feedback from the residents, and they are asking if it's a possibility, if we could put the minutes for our meetings out in the lobby of the downstairs Public Safety Building, or if we could also distribute them, like, the current goes out to, you know, to the library, or to the grocery stores or somewhere, that people can just pick them up, because many people can't watch the meetings, they don't have cable, or they can't stay up late enough to watch them, but they'd still like to know what's going on in the township, so there's other resources out there that we can make what we do and say here available to people. One more thing about priorities, I know the issue of priorities came up, and I think, thought I heard that it wasn't a priority for some people. If any issue is a priority for our residents, it should be a priority for the township, so I'm hoping we can keep the conversation for medical marijuana going on as often as we can. That's all I, oh, and Merry Christmas, Mr. Dockett, since we won't see you for Christmas.
Merry Christmas, since you won't be here for Christmas.
And...
Am I in?
I'm in.
He's checked out.
He's checked out.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Ains has something.
Just a brief comment, last meeting, we talked about the health insurance and the different options, and that we were not able to explore one of the options because of the contract with the police union. I received feedback that apparently, some of the police considered that to be a negative comment about them, and it was not intended to be. We try to honor the police contract in every way we can, don't want to have any violations or grievances, and I think I speak for the whole Board. and it was not intended to be. We try to honor the police contract in every way we can. Don't want to have any violations or grievances. And I think I speak for the whole board that we have the utmost respect for our police officers, and we thank them for a job well done.
Okay, thank you. Yep, well, yeah, I'm glad that we have so much public participating. I'm sorry the meetings are so long. I do my best to reduce it, and we can get it down to half the size, and then the day beforehand, it seems like it explodes. So anyway, we will, we're not doing business that we don't have to do. We do talk too long, though. So I would, you know, I want to encourage us all to get questions answered ahead of time so that we're not going on and on about stuff. I hate to cut you off when you have several questions, but please get them answered ahead of time, and that will help make it shorter. All right, and thank you all. I hope you all had a great Thanksgiving. Yes, motion to adjourn, and I agree. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Anyone opposed? Okay, thank you.